All right, welcome everyone to the June 14th meeting of the Hadley Select Board. So first order of business tonight is the consent agenda. And this evening we have two warrants to approve.
So moved.
You're gonna wait for the rest of it?
No.
Then I'm gonna second it.
It's gonna be a quick meeting.
All right, so we have a resignation from Hadley Media. One of our, Andrew Marques, is that his last name?
Marquis.
Marquis. Who was with us for a short while but contributed a lot in his short tenure, so we're gonna miss Marcus, or miss Andrew. We have a common vic license for Mass Baked Potato LLC, also known as Wendy's. We have a request from Edward Hopkins Educational Foundation, which is operating on behalf of the Hadley Schools for a first annual celebration of lights to be held December 9th, 2017. We have a request to, for a town hall closure, and this is a practice that we have followed intermittently over the years when the holiday falls during the week. So this is a request to close town hall on Monday, July 3rd, in advance of the July 4th holiday on Tuesday. And we have-
I just, oh, go ahead. I had a question on that.
Okay, and then, last item, we have a request to relocate the First Settlers Monument near the Lake Warner Dam. This was a historical commission request that was submitted by Ginger Goldsberry. Okay.
Okay. I would request, since we have folks in the audience this evening that I think would like to speak to the Edward Hopkins Educational Foundation request, that we allow them to speak if we could. And Mr. Welsh Evans, would you like baked potato Wendy's DVA taken off that, so we can speak about that?
Uh, no, you don't have to take it out. I got a couple of questions about these licenses for some of these restaurants.
Motion.
Motion to accept.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay, go ahead, Doc.
When we, when we were redoing these licenses every year, is the Board of Health, Police, and Fire and everybody notify DPW? Because this particular one, I know myself, inspecting the grease traps, they're not on schedule and they don't have a schedule, this particular business.
They don't have a what?
They don't have a schedule for cleaning their grease traps. They're not cleaning it quarterly, and it needs to be addressed.
So let's kind of commend and control coordination with the licenses, not only in terms of their compliance with other licensing requirements, but also their, whether they're up to date in terms of all their taxes and municipal charges is something that we're working actively on. We have developed a new permit application form, which includes a checkoff, so that's being circulated for comments right now.
All right.
So-
To address that specific issue.
Well, and this eventually will be added into the IT, into the, into every department.
Yes, yeah.
All right. It's just something that, a couple more loose ends that we need to address.
Yeah. So one of the things that you can do is you can grant the common vic, and then we can hold it until you've had a chance to, until, until we've had a chance to confer with Wendy's and say, have you developed your schedule for grease trap cleaning, et cetera? These are the reasons why this is important.
That would certainly be my preference in light of it.
As well.
Okay, so, we'll make the, assuming that the vote is taken in favor, we'll make that subject, too?
Yep.
Okay. The other thing is, we have a couple of folks here tonight, Ms. Tudron and Mr. Peles, from the Education Foundation. Did you want to tell the folks a little bit about the celebration?
Sure. What we're proposing is to have, we're hoping to be an annual celebration at the Hadley-Hopkins Memorial Park gazebo, and our first scheduled one is scheduled for December 9th, and we're hoping it's going to become a community event. Some of you, I'm sure many of you remember the late Dorothy Russell, and at one point she had what was called the Festival of Lights, where it was on a weekend and all the, as many houses in town as possible put the lighted candles in their, in their windows. And there hasn't been much community involvement since her passing. So what we are proposing is to have this event, we've already spoken to band director at the school, and the superintendent, and the principal, the band and the chorus would be involved. What we're asking of you tonight, since it is on town property, we have a lansic nursery, who wants to donate a tree and plant it. What did you say, Joe?
10 or 15?
10 or 15 foot trees. And since it's town property, we need your permission for that to happen. So that's really what we're here for tonight.
Superintendent was one, thought it was a wonderful idea, was that?
Yes, she did.
That's the only questions that I had, and the opportunity to let them speak to the issue as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
A couple other things.
Go ahead.
A couple other things that we would do during that evening is maybe have hot chocolate and coffee kind of thing. We spoke to the band director, the principal, and the superintendents, and they're all in favor of doing this. And every year we hope to build on this kind of thing and make it maybe a little larger and get other community groups together. We're hoping that December 9th is not going to be a conflict with the school or anything else going on in the community. If it is, we can certainly move that date. That's not set in concrete. But we basically, the people that are donating the tree, we have to notify, that would go on maybe sometime in September. And, but that's the main thing. Put, wherever that tree is going to be placed, well, we'll discuss that, if you have any ideas or anything like that. I'm assuming that there is a power box, and the, as you look at the gazebo from Route 9 on the left-hand side, and somewhere within that particular area forward would be maybe sort of an ideal area, but again, that isn't set in concrete either, and the tree could be placed maybe at a better location or whatever.
We have Marla look at that.
Well, I know what-
But in terms of any power or anything like that?
Power and things, I think DPW should get involved with that, too. We actually met him-
Marla?
Just coincidentally, one day here in the hall when we were looking for David. So he's aware of it, too.
Okay.
And told us to get in touch with him.
I think it's a great idea. I just want to make sure that it's not anywhere with our pipes and things like that.
Oh, right, right.
And for growth, you know, you want to make sure you have enough room, so that it does grow.
Exactly. Very good.
Okay, anything else?
The only thing I'd like to suggest is somebody coordinate with the Friends of Lake Warner, because they have the tree lighting on the lake, and I don't think we'd want them both the same day.
Exactly.
Because they'd have to choose between the two.
That's a boys' worst, isn't it? That's a boys' worst, too, I don't think.
I think it's, well, it's a combination of them, but I know last year the Friends made soup and everything like that, and they handled that end of it through.
Thanks for that. Okay, so there's a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion items, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thanks for your support.
Okay, so we have a scheduled appointment at 7:15, our first one, but we're not quite there yet, so, public comment. Is there anybody here this evening for public comment?
I don't know if I have a public comment, but this might not be the appropriate time. Ruth Ann Fitzgibbons, I'm the resident of Hadley and member of the Hadley Education Association. And the reason I'm here tonight is we have some questions about the possible adoption of the Massachusetts General Law 32B, and I'm wondering if I should wait or ask those questions right now.
I think, if it's okay with you, Ruth Ann, I mean, we want to make sure that you have the opportunity, but it might make more sense for folks if we hear the report from the Hampshire Insurance Trust first.
Okay.
And then, obviously, the Select Board invited them here this evening, so we'll have some questions, but then we'll absolutely be happy to recognize you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, let's see, Fire Substation and Senior Center update?
So, up here right now.
Right. Okay, both projects are on hold, and the Fire Committee's meeting next, next week?
Well, we're on hold, too, because probably for another two to three weeks, because the OPM and the architect, we are due some renderings from the architect, so I think that is what we're waiting for.
Yeah. There is a late proposal that came in having to do with the geotech survey of the property where the proposed senior center is going to be, so that's listed under Other Business, so if you wanted to take that up now, that would-
Sure, yeah, why don't we, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Is Jane gonna speak to it, or are you?
Happy to speak to it, but I'll defer to Jane first.
So, one of the reasons our costs were way high was the site preparation. So, in order to save lots of money, we would like to spend $6150 for more geotech work to define the specific areas where the soil has been found to be not supportive of building. So what they're gonna do is go back in, what happened was, one of the borings they did, they had to dig down, they said we would have to take soil out for 10 feet deep and replace it with suitable soil for support for a building. And because there was only one boring at that area, they assumed one-third of the building would have to have that done. So what this testing will do is to limit that down to, they'll try and absolutely pinpoint where the site is, it needs to be fixed. And if you sign it tonight, that's great, because then they can get on with that, and I know you're waiting to hear our costs for the new size building. And the architects are ready to go to the estimators on Friday, and these, the geotech people said it would take them two weeks to have their things in, so that will help speed up the process.
So where would the $6100 come from?
It would come from the funding article for the senior center, the $5.3 million.
I think it's a good idea. I think we need to tweak that up and get the right numbers to the people, so that we can see what exactly can happen. Again, it's not that, you know, it's gonna pinpoint where the building's gonna be able to be built, and give us a better idea of what needs to be done to accommodate to build on the best place available. And this really tweaks it up.
It kind of amazes me, though, that they only did one test boring. They did three.
They did three, but the-
So they know which way they gotta go?
But they knew from even doing North Hadley, that the whole area from here, from Connecticut to Vermont, is blue clay. So I think that's what's causing us the problem, because we ran into the same problem up in North Hadley, which, hey, you have to bring out what's there and refill with-
It actually looks like, well, we don't seem to have blue clay in our report at all. We have a lot of sand and silt. But what there is, is some organic matter, which is what's not stable for holding a building, so that's what has to be removed and bring in suitable.
This is probably a buried horizon, so I'm thinking hundreds of years ago, there was a flood event that buried, buried the topsoil and then redeposited sand and gravel, and then the topsoil grew on top of that, so that's what, this is probably what it is.
The other part of the test will be a couple of pits in the parking lot area to look at a drainage system that isn't the infiltration, but rather a swale system, which would be much less expensive.
The original plan called for the water to be mitigated beneath the ground with 100 parking spots. Now that they're going down to somewhat less than 100, if the above-ground mediation is gonna be able to take care of the water, and it needs to be finite and figured it out. And it's in excess of $200,000 to put the system below, so if we can get this done with the parking lot made smaller, is a significant savings. We're looking to save as much money as we can and come in on budget. Ask for your support. Motion accept.
Can I make one comment? You know, the problematic area with this whole situation with both buildings is, both committees didn't have money, any money upfront. They did it by sweat and teat, you know, and to get it. Many members spent a lot of their own money to get it off and running. Maybe that's a lesson we should learn for the future. Building a new building, a subcommittee needs money to do these initial tests before we go out and, you know, put a rubber stamp on a project. You know, we have to plan by giving them money to work with.
Yeah, but in this case, Donald, obviously, if they got three borings and they know which way they're going to move the structure a little bit, and they got, they've got clean borings wherever they're gonna drill now, then we should be all right with the building.
I guess what I'm trying to say, John, these tests should have been done a long time ago, before the building went further. That should have been the first things that, but nobody had any money before, you know, to take it from anywhere. They didn't have a budget to work with, and that's something we should be concerned with in the future.
Yeah.
Giving them ample money to make sure these studies can be completed before we jump in the whole thing and too far, and then we find this out.
Yep, no, I totally agree with you. So again, lesson, lesson learned going forward, you know, but, but in the meantime, so, I think you made a motion, but I don't think we got that far.
I don't think there was a second.
Right. So, motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to accept this recommendation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. And, perfect, my phone says 7:14 and a half, so we're gonna go to the-
As we all know, the chairman's phone is always correct.
That's right. Okay, so tonight, we would like to welcome Mr. Joseph Shea, who is the Executive Director of the Hampshire Franklin Group Insurance Trust. And, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. And we asked Mr. Shea if, in a previous meeting, if you were watching, we asked Mr. Shea to come before us tonight to provide us with an update on the financial health of the group insurance trust, and then also talk about the possibility of the environment that might create any sort of conversation about changes going forward.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for having me. The Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust is a self-insured entity, and I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with insurance and the self-insurance world, where, being a self-insured entity, all of the municipal groups that participate in the trust actually own the trust. The trust is an insurance company basically on its own. We have 69 municipal groups, with Hadley being one of them, that basically own the trust. Where we then go out and hire Blue Cross Blue Shield, we use them, we pay them to use their contracts with all of their doctors in hospital systems. Then also pay them to adjudicate our claims. So then at the end of the year, whenever, when we look to set premium rates or benefit changes, it's the trust membership that makes those benefit changes and premium decisions, where basically the timeline is in December, the executive committee will be made, and we'll make recommendations at that point in time for any premium rate increases, and then we meet with an insurance advisory committee, where all 69 of our groups-
Is it impossible for you to say, or decreases?
Well, actually, we did have a decrease three years ago on our retiree Medicare program, where we made a change to it, and that there was a decrease. And actually, in the packet I sent out, we're going to look at the, sort of the history of the premiums. Unfortunately, there was mostly, mostly increases, but we did have a four-year period where we had zero increases across the board, which is almost unheard of. So, so there's an executive committee of the trust that's made up of nine members, and then the insurance advisory committee, each municipality has a voting share for the insurance advisory committee. And final decisions are then made in that December and January time period. In my packet that I handed out, we'll just walk through, page one is just a quick sort of snapshot from insurance year 2015 through 12/31/2016. And if you just really go to the bottom line of the total net assets, you're gonna see from insurance year 2015 to the end of '16, a drop of $7 million of net assets. And that assets is really our unrestricted, or unrestricted cash or our reserve, basically, that we have to offset any premium increases or to offset any large claims coming through the door. So just going from assets to liabilities, we have cash and short-term investments, then we have CDs and an investment account that, that's a little more aggressive, you know, with our investment money, or with the money to earn a little better rate, just because, as we all know, the banks don't pay really anything if you leave it in the bank. So we've been very successful with that one particular account. We're averaging seven and a half, eight percent return on the account in the last year alone, which helps, again, the bottom line. Number of account receivables, that's just units that still owes money as of that particular month. The liabilities of the trust, Medicare FD premium, we, we purchase for the Medicare subscribers, pharmaceutical portion of their plan, and pay the federal government for that. ACA transitional reinsurance payable, in the wonderful world of the Affordable Care Act, there's a variety of taxes and fees that you don't really see, that the trust is responsible for paying on your behalf. And at the end of the year, there was a $228,000 bill payable to the federal government for an ACA.
I don't see anything in '15's line item for that, is this new?
Right, yes, yes.
Joe, do you mind if we ask questions as you go along, or do you want us to wait to the end?
Feel free to jump in.
You know, I realize why there's a $7 million loss because of being the representative, but could you briefly explain to the people why we lost $7 million? It's not poor management.
Oh, no, no.
You know what I mean? So they get an idea why we lost that $7 million.
Sure, there's a variety of reasons. First off, we basically had that time period where, if you look on page two, just which is our rate increase history, and it goes back to 2000, you know, from 2000 to 2005-ish, there were some very significant premium increases, and then it sort of stabilized for a while. And then from 2011 to 2015, or 2014, we had a 0% increase across the board, which, again, is really unheard of. And then at that same time period, our claim experience was running very, very well, so we were actually putting away a lot of money into our reserve, and our reserve account was overflowing, or we had a nice piggy bank that was growing. We knew that wasn't gonna last forever, just because claims go up. So, in 2015, 2016, we did have rate increases. The rate increases that were recommended by me to the executive committee and the insurance advisory committees in both of those years, they were rejected and actually decreased. They just felt that because of the excess reserve that we had, we didn't need to have a premium increase that was recommended by myself, that we would raid the piggy bank. And then we get to the final year, which is 2017 insurance year, and we saw rate increases of 9.4% on our HMO and 10.8% on the PPO. And in that three-to-four-year time period, again, we didn't have rate increases for a four-year time period, and then the last three years, what we've seen are significant increases in claims and our claim experience, specifically in our pharmaceuticals. In the last four years, our pharmaceutical expenses have doubled. They've gone from $6 million a year to $12 million a year. We asked the drug companies, the drug companies are, check the word, money, hungry-
gouging, how they can-
gouging organizations, where they can literally charge anything that they want, and there is no control within the United States to stop them. And one of the things that, doing a little digging, was that we even discovered, even on the tier-one drugs, which is a generic drug, that they started incrementally bumping up those costs for those. So even though it was still a very cheap drug, they can bump it up by an extra $5, and nobody sees it, doesn't feel it, except for the insurance companies. And we, like I said, are essentially the insurance company. So, so again, we saw our expenses just on pharmaceutical double from $6 million to $12 million a year. And we weren't really expecting that, the cross wasn't expecting it, it was sort of a surprise. One year of 26% increase, followed by a second year of a 39% increase, which, again, there's no crystal ball that says you're gonna see an increase like that year after year. And, and we did. And then throw on top of that the Affordable Care Act. We paid about $1.1 to $1.2 million worth of fees to the federal government. We don't know what's gonna happen with the new president. The biggest portion of those fees has ended, there was a three-year life, shelf life on those fees. So ongoing, we expect the fees to be about $10,000. So, big difference between a few hundred thousand dollars of fees versus $10,000. So, so again, you know, the bigger portion of those fees has stopped, but we don't know what's gonna happen with the new administration, so-
I think it's easy, excuse me, it's easy to relate to, just take the case of the EpiPit. They raised that up 600%, going from $100 to $600.
Correct.
You know, in the case of a bee sting or a peanut reaction and things like that.
Right.
And that's just one drug.
Correct.
And just, before you continue, just going to the balance sheet or the solvency of the insurance trust, if somebody were to look at the balance sheet and see cash reduced as significantly as it has been for the reasons that you've just articulated, somebody could be quite concerned, like, well, you know, they've only got two years left if this keeps up. So could you talk about, I think that's important.
When you look at page one, the unrestricted, unrestricted is, again, the reserve that we have. And the rule of thumb in the insurance world is to have approximately three months worth of claims as a reserve. Three months of claims for, for the trust is approximately $13 to $14 million. So we still are over-reserved, so if you looked at 2015, we were really over-reserved. So again, we've chewed up $10 million of that reserve. We knew we were going to use that reserve to basically subsidize rates for a while. What we weren't expecting was to take a $10 million chunk over a three-year period. If it was, you know, $10 million over a five, six, seven-year period, that'd be one thing. But again, if the chunks were bigger, and even with the 9.4% increase that we saw this year, if you're projecting, or the actuaries at Blue Cross Blue Shield are projecting a little under $3 million loss, so we expect to take another chunk out of the reserve. Even taking that next chunk out of the reserve, we still are properly reserved. So, from a financial end, yes, we look at the cash, it's going one way and one way only, but we're able to bank and over-reserve for a long extended period, so we are financially still in very good shape.
But do you have, do you have to use Blue Cross and Blue Shield, or do you go out to bid with them?
No, we use them primarily because of their network. So no, I mean, we haven't put that out to bid since I've been in this role, which has been five years. What we do put out to bid is, we do employ a reinsurance program to protect the trust from any large claims. The reinsurance program works for this past year that just ended, we had a stop loss amount of $250.
$250?
I'm sorry, $250,000.
Right.
And the first $250,000 of a particular claim is paid for by the trust. Anything over $250,000 is paid for by the reinsurer. The reinsurer happens to be Blue Cross Blue Shield, but we do put that out to bid every year.
Do you have any sort of aggregate stop loss for multiple claims?
No.
Okay, so just on an individual per occurrence?
Correct.
So the one thing that theoretically could really truly hammer the trust in an unexpected way, you'd have to have a significant number of individual claims.
Right.
Right, yeah.
And this year, the insurance year that just ended, which was March 31st, we did have a claimant that hit the magic million dollar mark and blew right through it, and the claims are still ongoing, where it was $1,003, $1,004, and we were responsible for the first $250,000, and the reinsurer basically was on the hook for the next million, million one. But this insurance year that just ended, we had, it was either four or five people that went over that $250,000 mark. And actually, the reinsurance premiums that we paid out the door, we actually got back more so, we were actually in the black, so it was a good, good plan or good decision that we made on the reinsurance year that just ended, for 3/31. Last year's plan was even better. It saved the trust of approximately $800,000, because we had 16 people that went over the stop loss amount. So, the only bad thing about that is, because we've sort of had a winning streak of two years, where benefited the trust in the last two years, our rates go up, our premium, reinsurance premiums go up.
So, rates did go up.
And the million dollar claim is still running. It's, it's a dependent that we're sitting there with our fingers crossed. They turn 26 in November, and we're hoping it comes off our plan. And it does, great. If it doesn't, then our reinsurance is going to see increases year after year. And so, so a combination of things. You know, one claim started significantly rapidly increasing pharmaceuticals, sort of blew us out of the water. We weren't expecting to throw in ACA fees. So it was a combination of events, but the prime target was, was really pharmaceuticals.
No, most of your budget is fine, it's managed well. The only problematic area I have is what you're being assessed by the COG. And I think it's unfair for professional in technology services, they've escalated you way up, no one else has, because they know you have money to pay for- for, and it helps with their situation trying to balance their budget for the COG. But it's being balanced on rate payers, and I don't like that.
Right. The trust has an approximately $500,000 budget for the four staff and for the office and just really running operations for the trust. And to Donald's point, yes, we pay $47,000 a year for administrative overhead. I've tried to negotiate or tried to argue that I think is too high in that, and it was $54,000. We did knock it down to $47,000 last year. I tried to get it knocked down further again this year.
If you weren't, I guess you're not inextricably linked to the COG, but you're brotherhood right now. If you weren't part of that partnership or brotherhood, would it cost you more to go out on your own, or would you say?
I mean, I've done research where I've been with a couple of years, for a couple of years running, you know, a commercial real estate broker, and talked about, you know, space, whether it's in the King Street corridor of Northampton, or, you know, further out, where the King Street corridor is a little more expensive, where if you do go outside of that, it's cheaper.
Yep.
You know, and then you would have to look at the rest of the infrastructure of IT and phone services and stuff like that. And could we do it for less than $47,000? Absolutely.
Okay. I mean, that's not going to resolve your claims experience.
Right. Oh, no, no, yeah, yeah.
But to Donald's point, it's certainly good to know that you have some options.
Yeah, I mean, the $47,000, you know, represents almost 9%, 10% of my budget.
Pretty good. Okay, so, sorry.
So, again, with that, so, again, there was many components that made up where that $10 million loss occurred. And, but, again, the driver was claims and ACA fees. And then the third page is just a quick summary for the Town of Hadley by participating in the trust. The state used to, and they eliminated this a year ago, but we continue to do it just because it's a good snapshot. And what the third page shows is it's comparing the trust to the state GIC, and the state GIC's most actively used plan, which happens to be the Tufts Health Plan Navigator. And it's tough to do an actual apples-to-apples comparison, just because we can look at the premium, but what it really doesn't reflect are any of the benefits. Our benefits are vastly different from the GIC, because the GIC has a variety of co-pays and deductibles across the board where we do not. But in a summary, July 1st of last year, Hadley belonging to the trust, there was a $240,000 savings to the Town of Hadley by participating in the trust when comparing ourselves just to the state GIC plan. So that's, so, again, you know, we've seen ourselves lose approximately $10 million. We're still over-reserved, but we don't want to be like a lot of the other joint purchase and trust groups across the Commonwealth. A lot of them have been scrambling over the last couple of years, just because they've had the same thing happen. They've seen premiums or claims go up significantly, then they've gone scrambling to figure out what to do. And a number of them have rolled out GIC-like plans. A number of them have actually lost municipalities that have moved elsewhere, whether it was Ramaya into the GIC or looked elsewhere, so.
Have you lost membership?
No, we've never lost anyone, and we.
That's rather telling, I would think, then.
No, and we continue to get calls every year, and we say no more than we say yes. I've been here a little over five years, and we're adding a group, the Town of Asphalt, on July 1st, sort of being the seventh group in five years that we've added. And, like I said, we say no more than we say yes, where when a municipality looks or makes a request to enter into the trust, we do look at their last two years' worth of claim experience, just to see if it makes a good fit for the trust. And in most cases, it's not.
So, David, did you then want to, either you or, and/or Joe, talk about the initiative that's underway right now?
Right. So we'd talked about, Linda and John are, this conversation as well, so if anybody wants to take the lead, that's fine. But we talked about the future of providing quality, good quality, health insurance to our employees, to our retirees, and we want to make sure that, given the uncertainty of the market right now, given the uncertainty of the kinds of laws that may be passed by the federal government in the next month or so, that the select board and the trust have as many tools in your tool chest as you need in order to make adjustments, should they be needed in the future. So tonight, recommending that the board adopt Mass General Law Chapter 32b, Sections 21, which is a procedural section, just outlines the process, and then Section 22, which allows for plan design. As part of that, just a little bit of background, procedurally, to get us to this point of the conversation, we have sent out by certified mail's return receipt, as required by law, notices to the four unions and the retirees. Those unions be DPW or the UPCU, Dispatch, which is under the Teamsters, Police Department, again, under the UPCU, and the school unions under HEA, as well as a letter to the state retiree representative, and notice to the Secretary of Administration and Finance. So we've done all of that to comply with the law, so that everybody's put on notice about the meeting tonight. I also took the additional steps of handing copies to the local union representatives, as well as calling up each union business officer, with the exception of each HAe, HEA, and I'll get to that in a moment. And just talk through, what are we trying to do? Why is this important? Why should we keep our options open? What does this talk do in terms of long-term stability for our ability to provide a health insurance? So we've reached out to everybody. I reached out to the superintendent of schools, in your case, and talked through that issue, and I hope that was further communicated to you. So everybody's at the table at this point, and it's important to stress that this is just a procedural motion right now on those two sections of Mass General Law Chapter 32. And that when and if we engage in any kind of real change in healthcare plan design, there is an opportunity for all the unions, as well as the retirees, to come to the table for negotiations about impact and what this means, so.
And just to be clear for everybody, if we were not to take action to adopt this Mass General Law provision, then what position, what's the existing position that we're in?
As I understand, we need to take this vote by July 1st, because there's going to be a meeting coming up.
That was sort of a date that was used or selected just to get municipal groups to have, start having discussions, because we didn't want to wait until later in the year. Let's say, again, if we voted, let's say, in the fall, and there wasn't enough time to have meetings and discussions where, so at our last IAC meeting, you know, I did set a July date, just to get the ball rolling and getting the municipal groups discussing, so.
But, again, totally hypothetical.
Well, and I guess, and I was telling David earlier, I've had a number of groups come back to me saying that they were not going to be adopting 21, 22 for a variety of reasons. Couple of them, we have a lot of small municipal groups that are part of the trust, they don't have unions, so they said, this doesn't apply to that. We've had a couple bigger groups that have said that they're not going to adopt it because collective bargaining doesn't cover benefit changes, so they don't feel that it's necessary for them to adopt 21 or 22. So from the trust perspective, that's fine. And if a group doesn't want to adopt 21, 22, then, you know, the trust can make changes, and they will make changes. But, you know, we're trying to, I guess, inform and keep all of the municipal groups updated on potential things that they need to do. And in your particular case, you know, it's 21 and 22. And I know David's talked to the town council, and, you know, that based on union contract language, the benefits are discussed, or, again, I don't know for what detail.
So that basically is why you're here, that there may be healthcare changes?
Right. The trust has been discussing for the last year and a half, potential change, because, you know, when we were warning folks that there was going to be a significant premium increases, you know, right down the horizon, and this year came along, and it was 9.4% and 10.8% respectively. If we don't make any changes, you're going to see a fairly good-sized premium increase again next year. And municipal groups are concerned, what's that going to their budget? And how are they going to come up with that kind of money to cover double-digit increases? So for the last year and a half, at our IAC meetings, we've had discussions. And the first one was, you know, we made benefit changes, you know, what is the general consensus of what you'd like to see, or what kind of changes? And the first, it was sort of made loud and clear, is they did not want a true deductible plan, you know, where there's a $500 or a $1,000.
A high deductible that private industries own to?
Right. So, again, as we had further discussions, it was more agreeable to have co-pays instituted, where if you look at our plan, the only co-pays we have are our office visits of either $15 or $20, and a $75 emergency room co-pay. That's it. There's no co-pays for hospitalizations, MRIs, outpatient surgeries, nothing, which we are sort of standing alone in the industry to have that kind of plan. So as the discussions went on, we discussed having, again, instituting co-pays, and then also looking at our pharmaceutical plan of maybe imaging or having an image of what the GIC did, where the GIC did add a deductible to their pharmaceutical plan. It's not large, it's $100 for an individual, $200 for a family, and that's our biggest pain point. So we, you know, are taking a serious look at having a deductible plan just for the pharmaceuticals only, and layering in copayments as well. But we wouldn't have that overall deductible that a lot of insurance plans have.
Some insurance has to have $2,000 to $3,000 deductible.
Correct.
I see that all the time.
Yeah, with the state GIC.
$60 specialties?
Well, again, that would be one of the proposals for our plan.
Funny for just family practice.
Right. And with the GIC, a co-pay doesn't go toward the deductible, which is sort of unusual, where on a private side plan, usually, your co-pay goes toward the deductible.
But you don't have a $2,000, $3,000.
Sure you do.
No, no, GIC you don't. Not GIC.
Oh, no, not, no, right. GIC, you'd be paying co-pays for the whole year, even if you blew through your deductible. So you have your deductible, you have your co-pay. You may meet your deductible, but your co-pays will live the whole year long.
Right.
So, again, that's not what we're looking at from a deductible end. It would only be for pharmaceuticals only, and then adding in copayments for various services, for hospitalizations, outpatient surgery, and things like that.
In essence, you're basically just saying what you said before, we cannot continue to draw down on our reserves.
Right.
And we have to find a mechanism to pay for it, to compensate that.
There's a couple levers, and there's really, literally, only a couple levers. One of the levers is, you know, you keep having 10% premium increases until the marketplace sort of stabilizes, or do you make some changes to your benefits? And if you make changes to your benefits, you look at the last page of the handout I have for you. Column three is the change that we're talking about, specifically in regards to copayments in the pharmaceutical deductible. And you see a couple near the bottom, some factors in there, the .951 and the .989, where if you apply that to our claim experience, it comes out to about 94%. So there'd be about a 6% savings of claims, of claims, of claim experience, and that equates to about $3.9 million. So if we made those kind of changes to our plan next year, we could see almost $4 million, you know, a little under $4 million worth of savings overall, so. So, again, that's one of the plans that we're looking at and have talked about seriously and will land on either the July or the October IAC.
So regardless of how we decide this evening, what we decide, nothing is done until we bargain it out, one way or the other. We're just exploring options that are available and what the cost savings could be, should that be adopted.
Right. And 20, as David said, 21 and 22 is just, if done law, is just the procedural steps that need to take place. And it's, you know, it's the state law.
And it's up for another discussion. I thought in our contracts, it's just that we would have insurance for the members of the unions, and they would just follow suit to what we have offered. And we do have a menu plan for them to choose from, so it's not like they have just one plan to choose from. Correct?
Meaning like HMO, PPO?
HMO, Health New England, do you have?
Health or Blue Cross, but there's.
Right.
But, again, each, you know, each unit that we have is different, where we have some units that refuse to offer the PPO because of the cost, where the PPO is more expensive, and the municipal group does not want to offer it because of the cost.
But, again, that would be.
Right. And, again, not knowing what your contract language says, that's, you know, I can't comment on that, just because.
Is that correct, David? We couldn't make that change without engaging the unions?
I think you have to notify them, but I think we can make the change.
Not necessarily. I think, so, and we weren't even sure whether we needed to go through the notification at this level, because of what's in the contract, it's more general than that. But through David's discussions with town council, it was, this was really the way that was recommended that we go. So I don't know whether this would apply at other levels or not, because within the town, I understand the town has made those decisions as to what it will offer, and the contracts say what percentage they will.
That's what I'm remembering, is the percentage.
Correct.
The percentage doesn't, doesn't affect what we're talking about here.
Right. Right. That's how the pie gets split, but the total cost of the programs are really between the municipal government and the trust.
Right.
Okay. Right. Okay. Does that make sense to everybody?
It does.
Okay.
Because the individuals pick their programs, and depending on the program they pick, will pay a little more or a little bit less, anyway.
Right. So, I know we have a representative, are you representing?
I'm on the HEA.
Yeah, okay. So we have a representative from the Hadley Educators Association here tonight. So Ruthanne, did you have comment or questions?
They asked me to ask three questions.
Okay.
So assuming that you do adopt the provisions, what's your timeline about making a decision about health coverage changes?
We would say no later than October, we would know exactly what the changes are.
Okay.
The next set of IAC meetings, there's one in July and one in October.
Okay.
So it could be voted on as early as July, but no later than October.
No later than October, okay. And at what point in the exploration and decision-making process do you expect, I know you had mentioned you'd involve the unions, the bargaining unions in town, to discuss the options available?
Well, that's, I mean, David wouldn't be able to do that until we land on what our changes would be. So then, then really, the ball bounces back into the town's court to then start talking to.
So what's that?
After October.
Well, let's say if we vote in October, then the clock starts ticking, yes.
Okay, so after October. After October, yeah.
And then the last question is, would the HEA be correct in assuming that the bargaining around health insurance would involve not just the review of potential health plans, but also the cost involved for the employees and the town?
The split, the percentage split between employer and employee.
Right. That's part of the.
I would say so, but I'm just saying.
You're talking about the 65-35 split.
I don't think the percentage is going to change, I just think that the plan.
Well, but I think, I think we don't know that, is the point. We don't know that, is the point.
Participation of subscriber and town.
That's the point.
For retirees, somebody, for 65-35 for active.
But, but just to, again, just want to be clear, I mean, and we're not talking about intent tonight, we're just talking about what could be at the table, right? So what could be at the table is, right now, the town picks up 65%?
65-35.
And 35% goes.
And that was voted at town meeting, correct?
No, that's a select board vote.
That's, yeah, it's a select, but wasn't that also, is, so, not, is that also something that goes to the bargaining table? Is the question?
I don't think the split goes to the bargaining table. I think that's something that's entirely with the select board, but the plan design does. So, any discussion about deductibles or co-pays?
No, I just wanted to make sure that Ruth Ann can go back.
So they're just saying it doesn't?
No, the menu plan would go to the, what we call a cafeteria plan, would go to the HEA.
Okay.
Yeah, this is all kind of new for all of us, so we're all, we're all doing the research at the same time. If you find a different answer, by all means, get in touch with me.
David's absolutely a hundred percent correct, because at our April meeting, we sent off everybody marching to get twenty-one, twenty-two approved. And then, as people started doing more research, we started getting the answers back saying, we're not adopting it because, and they would give their reasons. And, and we were just led to believe that most municipalities just follow the twenty-one, twenty-two law.
And actually, we've done that by notifying the unions.
Right, so far.
So far.
So far.
So are we here tonight to adopt this, to do the twenty-one, twenty-two? So I'll make a motion to adopt right now, since we have moved in that direction, to.
Okay, go ahead.
To move along to the twenty-one, twenty-two MGLs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I know Terry from the Finance Committee, did you?
Well, he answered one of the questions, was the percentage breakdown. And so the other question is, can you just tell me what a single-family plan costs versus a family? I don't have a copy.
I don't have the pricing. Well, I have an extra copy of this, but off the top of my head, I know an HMO, single-family, about ninety-six, twelve, something like that.
I do have, apparently.
Of course she does.
Okay, an individual plan, do you want the total or just the employee?
Just the total of it.
The total of an individual plan under Network Lou, which is our lowest, is six oh four eighty-four per month. A two-tier is one thousand four hundred, eight dollars and fifty cents.
Two-tier is an employee plus one.
A family plan under, and these are the HMO, is one thousand seven hundred, forty-six, twenty-eight. And under the PPO, an individual is seven oh six fifty-two. And a family plan is one thousand nine hundred, thirty-five dollars and twenty cents. These are the monthly premiums.
Okay, thank you.
To the sixty-five, thirties split.
Yeah.
Right, the total. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded, is there further discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is, and I think Joe can reemphasize this, that the trust is an independent body and it isn't affected by the COG. So whatever transpires in the COG in the future does not affect the trust, because they're an independent body.
That's correct.
If the COG goes belly up at some date, the trust will operate on its own initiative and continue and serve the eighty-nine communities that you serve.
If you look at the organizational chart, I report into an executive committee of the trust, which then goes into the IAC of the trust. Then there's a dotted line to the executive committee or the full board of the Hampshire Council of Governments. And the way the charter was written, if the Council of Governments were to disband or go away, the Insurance Advisory Committee of the Trust would then become the trustee. So the trustee right now is the Council of Governments. But again, if that goes away, the trustee responsibility goes to the IAC of the trust. And there's a firewall, they can't touch our money. Where again, financially, you know, our accounts are the trust accounts and they're not associated with Council of Governments.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
John, are you abstaining or?
No, you're a union member, actually. I am, but this is on the.
This is on the high side.
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, great.
All right, so that was unanimous then to adopt. Okay, and so messages, obviously, we will do everything we can through David to stay in close conversation with all of the unions, as well as the whole workforce for that matter. But making sure that people are kept abreast of discussions. Did they, no?
Thank you.
And if you have any further questions, please bring them to us, you know, we want to work with everybody. We wish we didn't have to talk about things like this, but it is what it is.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thanks so much for coming.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, so our seven-thirty appointment, it was a little late, but, okay. So tonight we have a seven-thirty appointment with the Park and Rec Commission. So this is kind of a follow-up to previous discussions that we've been having. So do you want to provide an update, or where do you want, where should we start?
Well, I think the first thing, I wanted to point out, our interim is with us, this is Melissa Alouisi. And all of the, yeah, sisters, all of the feedback so far has been positive. In that she has hit the ground running to keep the department abreast of everything, passwords, all the transitional type things that would be needed with Kathy's departure. So we've been pleased and met before this and are happy with the updates so far.
So, so again, message in terms of anybody in the community watching?
Right.
There's no programming that people may have been planning on that's, that's popping off because of, so everything, all systems go.
As a matter of fact, you guys just posted earlier in the day about the summer programming on our Facebook page. And the website. Right.
And flyers went out to the school.
Okay.
Full schools.
So we have little last-minute updates for everyone with that. But everyone who signed up for the program is aware of.
Yes.
Locations and everything like that. We are here, I think, at David's request and your request, Molly, from about a month ago, regarding the position, I believe.
Yeah, so talking about, one of the things as a select board, we talked about was, you know, again, if, if, in fact, we have any turnover, you know, through natural attrition. That, that may be a good opportunity to just stop and take a look at that part of the organization and say, does it make sense to continue the way we're going? You know, you have an employee, one employee who's thirty hours a week?
Yes, I am.
Thirty hours a week at a certain pay scale, does it make sense to take a look at that job and rethink? You know, is there any opportunity to get that work done more efficiently through collaboration with other town departments, et cetera? And the Park and Rec Commission has always been kind of this, kind of one-off to the side, where, you know, we have a department heads that come and then we have a department head meeting. And Kathy's been participating in that. But the, not that the reporting structure elsewhere in town is that clear, but it's, it's, this is a little bit more convoluted, because we have a Park and Rec Commission that by mass general law was really allowed to be created, and it's up to any town to adopt it, to be the oversight authority over parks. And it's really kind of silent as to programming. So I think that over time in Hadley, the Park and Rec Commission kind of took on additional responsibilities that included more of the recreational aspects of it. And then we've had a lot of conversation about, you know, what capital needs are there in terms of space considerations, et cetera. You know, the programming at Park and Rec has changed over the years. It used to be more heavily focused on sports programming or athletic programming. There's been a move away from that. So I think, you know, in my mind, there've just been so many changes. You know, I wanted to at least have the conversation, does it make sense for us to continue the way we're structured currently? Is there any opportunity to look at potential efficiencies or cost savings with this transition right now? And so, I mean, really, you know, it's more of a planning conversation more than anything. And I, I had asked David to kind of take a look at the, the language around the Park and Rec Commission as well. And David, you want to add anything to what I just said?
Yeah, so it's clear that by law, the park commission has broad authority within parks. But we don't have much in the way of parks here. And there's the programming which extends far beyond park space. So I think, looking over the case law, that within the park boundaries, it's pretty clear the Park and Rec Commission has broad authority. But anytime you're not inside of a park, then that authority becomes a lot more diffuse. And I think the select board would have more control over, say, hiring a department head for the Park and Rec Commission. Whereas the Park and Rec Commission can direct how the park is landscaped or policed, or the coaches for the programs that take place within there. So it's kind of a power-sharing agreement that we've never really talked through. And I guess this is an opportunity to do that.
And I think the other thing too is that, I'm looking at other departments coming through here. We have, the Senior Center, for example, has a program coordinator. So they've hired somebody who handles programming for the seniors. The library has actually dramatically accelerated the programming that they're offering. And not just youth programming, but also for adults as well. So there are all these programs that are occurring at the, at the library too. So, and again, I'm sitting, I guess it's not, it's really not personal, it's just I'm sitting here at this table thinking, we've got programming going on in Council on Aging, we've got programming going on in the Parks Department, we have programming going on in the library, is there a more efficient way to handle all of that? Now, mind you, no discussion has happened with the Council on Aging or the libraries about this either. But is now the time to have a discussion? Because everybody up here said that, you know, we wanted to, again, as opportunity presents itself, look at some of these functions and see if there's a more efficient, more cost-effective way to deliver at least the same quality, if not even better quality, service to the town.
Well, and I think that when we look at all the boards, I think you are the elected officials, you have the right to run your program the way that you see fit. But again, we still follow, as all of us do, follow the same policies and procedures that the rest of the town follows. Whether it be the wage scale, the policies and procedures, the personal time, all of that really comes under that same umbrella. And so I think we all just want to be on the same page with that too. I think that's where.
Yeah, I think the perfect solution would be to have all those other department programmers come under Park and Rec and have it be a wonderful leisure services department with a leisure services director. I mean, I think our, we have capable people, Andy, Marianne, and myself are personally invested. Marianne and I have been the majority, and I think I can say it on the record, Kathy's helped at the Easter function, the Christmas function, the Halloween function. We're all invested in this and have a great deal, you know, with our kids helping and participating in this program. With our Girl Scouts troops expanding that number as well. So we're at the ages where our kids are that. I know a lot of your children are already past that age, so it may not be in the forefront of your mind.
It's all folks.
Right.
That's all folks.
Wasn't saying that. But yeah, I mean, I, I saw, you know, a library thing posted today for some type of activities coordinator. And that's something that.
A youth coordinator.
A youth coordinator.
That's actually a teen library, there's actually a librarian function as well.
Oh.
So I didn't see that part of it.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, we'd love to take on more. I think what's happening is we're restricted with our space. We were moved to the Senior Center. We've lost the ability to do some of our programs and are now under budgeting constraints of looking at spaces that are going to charge us crazy costs. So we'd love to do more, we'd love to take on more.
Yeah, I mean.
Terry, you had, oh, sorry.
I was going to say, just to add on to the space history, for those who may or may not recall, that, you know, we did have a fairly broad spectrum of programs that we were able to run out of North Hadley Hall until we ran into some egress and concerns with the condition of the building. So the size of assemblies were limited, significantly limited. So that cut back in our, a fair amount of our product offerings. How many kids could be put upstairs in that building? And, you know, then of course, a few years, a couple of years ago, when we were starting to look to rent space, we were hoping to maybe divert the funds ultimately from North Hadley Hall that were being used to support the Park and Rec programs, the oil and maintenance fees. And just, no additional cost to taxpayers to take that money, move that into renting programming space. And we got a lot of positive affirmation here, but when it came to budget time, that didn't occur. So we were looking to negotiate to find adequate space. And now we're in a position where we're, you know, scrambling to find space that's available. We do have some money, we do have some space, it is, but, you know, we're in a position where we've lost a lot of our programming space. And I'm not, I want to say that this is a continued discussion about resources. It's been a retraction of resources, or at least from our perspective. So we're doing what we can with what we have, and we want to get creative and expand that envelope.
Well, then, the other, the other side of that, again, the other end of the spectrum is, we've got Massachusetts law that allows for the creation of a Parks Commission that really doesn't have a whole lot to do with that programming. And then we have other people handling programming for youth and seniors and adults in between who've been growing those programs over the same time. And both of those groups are, they haven't definitively secured space, but they also have building projects underway where that, so then, you know, you can go the other side of it, say, does it make sense to centralize that with a park group and have this whole separate commission? Or would it make more sense to take the programming remaining that's being handled by the Park and Rec Department and absorb that elsewhere into the town and maybe have a programming coordinator? Yeah, no offense, we're trying to look to reduce costs where possible, not necessarily, you know, increase the scope, but not have the opportunity to reduce it elsewhere. So again, I just want to, I, you know, again, I'm not only speaking for myself, but I think it's time to look at the whole thing. And Terry, you wanted to, sorry?
Yeah, you know, so for several months now, I've been talking about shared services, not just Park and Rec, but with fire and police, we talked to Chief Spankable about it and so forth. And I, I think, you know, we're trying to look just across the board, just not at Park and Rec or one particular person or employee or so forth. But, you know, we, we set examples too, in each department and other departments look at, to see what we're doing as far as spending money and who gets what and pay scales and so forth. What I would like to see is, because of the coordinator thing that we have in front of us with three departments looking for basically the same type of person, I'd like to see the select board form a committee of maybe somebody from the select board, somebody from finance, somebody from the library and so forth. And get together, or outside people that have been active in Park and Rec or the library and so forth, and kind of just get together and look to see what would be best moving forward and not looking behind, you know? Because I used to be a Park and Rec Commissioner and I volunteered a lot. We had sports, we had tons of kids in all sports. It's not that anymore. You know as well as I do, Molly, you've sat on many boards with me, you know, at sport activities elsewhere. I did, didn't I? I know. You know, and I just think that things have turned a table. And I think it's great that we're able to offer other services for those kids that don't want to play sports or the ones that do play sports but may, maybe want to learn chess, or my son did sewing lessons, you know, I. And so things have changed. We don't have North Hadley Hall anymore. You know, we don't have that field there for kids to be able to use, which is a cost savings. And looking at the financial part of it is, you know, as a town, we're looking to see where we can save money and gain money for many things that need to be done in this town. So to me, that's looking at every department, not just one department, and the overall picture of everything. So I just think, but moving forward, to be able to get things accomplished, I think that we need to look at everything that we can. And since there is a point where Kathy's leaving and we have an interim person coming in, this would be a great opportunity to look at this department, just like when it was DPW and Marlo came on. We got fresh eyes there, ears there, and, you know, it was brought up about looking at that department. What can we do to save money, where, you know, what can we do to bring money in? And so that's where I'm kind of going with it. You know, we all want the same thing. We don't want, you know, we want it to be successful programs for the children, the elderly, however we get there. If it's joint services, you know, I think it needs to be done and looked at. So I'm kind of looking at, well, how can we do this? Do we create a board, you know, or committee overseen by the select board? And give it some time before we make this. And give it some time before we make this huge decision.
Marianne?
Yeah, I'm sorry. We'll just kind of go off what she said and what Diane said. So form the committee to try and just form basically a leisure service, not multiple service, just one leisure service group that provides services for all ages.
Not necessarily leisure services, but let's just-
Or some type of new-
Let's just see what each department can offer, what it can bring to the table, and what we can do with those things.
I think so.
Yeah.
I'd like to weigh in a little bit. And the first thing I'd like to say is that for generations, this board's been far more than overseeing the parks. This board has been Parks and Rec.
So that, I think to talk about it different tonight, I don't necessarily think that's fair. It's been Parks and Recs for a long time. What it was originally posted for was one thing. We've grown and evolved into what you guys are today. So, and I don't think it's run in parks. I think it has a lot more to do with the recreation aspect of it than the parks.
Yeah. They were, they were part of the commons at one time. They were part of the, there was reservoir conversations way back when to put some type of park up there. I mean, this is over the last 30 years.
And the Mission was also volunteer, too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And they ran the department.
We'll be volunteers. It's basically-
It's what you are now. It's what you are now. And it's-
I'll be a volunteer.
No, I'm against you. I'm just saying.
Oh, no, I know.
They put tons of offices in. Joanne was even a volunteer. You know, I just think that things have changed a little bit. You didn't make the decision tonight. And especially-
Things have changed a lot. We don't have a soccer department as individual. We have basketball that's individual. We have baseball that's individual.
But we have them.
But we have stuff as well locally. But it's not the majority of what we used to consider park and recreation to be. Now there's a whole lot of diversion of other things.
But Park and Rec has never had lately. It's never had, never had lately.
It's really been-
Nothing is there anymore that was there.
It's been one choice, one change.
Your goal is to come back if there's space.
See, that's-
That's the point.
It was before Cal Ripken, it was had to use baseball, which was part of Cal Ripken out of green, out of Frontier.
I have no, absolutely no interest in micromanaging the Park and Rec Department. First of all, they're elected officials, and they do a wonderful job. They present their budget every year to the finance committee. It's the finance committee to check on all these other departments. Make sure there is no duplication. If there is, correct it, you know? And they've done a wonderful job. I don't think we should be, you know?
We can't handle what we're doing now. We don't need another department to take over.
Exactly. And they do the job, and it'll solve itself. If they need extra money, you know, they put it in their budget for new programs or whatever, if it gets approved by the town meeting.
One thing we have is the timeline. And we have, it's been pointed out by David that the interim position is a 12-week position. Meanwhile, we know that things don't happen as quickly as we'd like to going through public policy. So what we're, you know, we're already looking at fall and winter programs. We're usually booking six months out. And if our interim position is going to end in- You know, how do we, how are we going to plan to go forward? Last I knew, we were in the budget for at least the entire fiscal year for that position. And which was approved, yeah. How are we going to-
Why is it just, Erin, why did you just do it interim now?
Because we had-
We told her to.
We were guided. Remember, I came back. It's all recorded.
Well, that is stupid of us, wasn't it?
No, no, I don't think it was.
But you did say get ready to go and hit the ground to get a new one, so that's-
I think we're trying to understand where you guys are going with the future, because your space is now limited. Where's Park and Rec going? What are we doing with it? What is your vision of the future? What's it going to look like? Whomever's there? We're looking, I think, to you. Tell us where you're going, what it's going to cost, and how we're going to get there. What your shortcomings are. It's fields, it's this, it's that. No space for recreation. So that we can begin to understand the programs in the future and understand how big, how small, how medium-sized is Park and Rec going to be.
I think, like, you know, we couldn't answer the thing about changing Park and Rec under the big picture today. I can't tell you what the costs of things are going to be. But I can tell you that Melissa and Kathy have finished stuff right now, are already planning our soccer stuff for the fall. Melissa was talking about some programs, like bouncing them off of Kathy, because we're always trying to get in new program ideas. You know, Kenny had some that we tried with Kathy for a while. So we're open to them. And I think we're trying some things, we've talked about through social media, where we're going to try and get more input for things. Yet, on the flip side, I know in the last 21 hours of work that Melissa has done, signing the time cards, asking what's up, we've looked at local facilities that we may have to consider using that could be okay cost-wise and low-cost compared to what we've been seeing. And we've also looked at some that might be way out of what we would want to consider. So we're trying to narrow down that scope and look at availability based on what we're finding as things progress. For example, with the mall, and maybe exiting that opportunity.
She has no problem incorporating Terry's suggestion that we look at opportunities for joint services with that. And I really would like to wait and get the information from Park and Rec based on the facilities they have and the opportunities they're in the future to understand what the program's going to look like in the future. As Chairman, I mean, as Ms. Chunglo has says, we have the budget.
That was Freudian slip.
It was a Freudian slip. The budget has been set. It's been established. And we, as a town, voted for your budget.
Right.
So your budget is what it is. We need to talk in the future to go forward as to whatever position is going to be and what it's going to be. And you need to provide us with information as to how that's going to grow itself and weigh itself out, is what I personally would like. The Donald's point, they're elected officials. Do your job. You know, I guess I'd like to further elaborate. They're no different than any other budget we're talking with. We know we have a serious problem for 219. And this is why we started right after town meeting. I commend the finance committee. They're really aggressive, and they're putting a lot of hours in. And this is the best I've felt about budget process in over a year. Our chairman has taken the initiative to look at all these positions and rate them and everything. We're doing that. We're trying to, you know, get on top of everything really early so the taxpayers know what's happening for 219. And this is part of the process of what you're going to do for 219 and how do you rectify it, you know?
So one thing I just want to add, be clear about, whatever. You know, again, we're all friends and neighbors, and we see each other. And so, again, truly not personal. And I hope nobody feels that way. When you're sitting on the receiving end of it, of course, it can feel that way. But the only thing I would take exception, Donald, is, of course, they're elected officials. And they're elected officials created by vote of town meeting and mass general law back in 1964. And to Jerry's point, I was actually surprised when David did the research and pulled it up and said that the general law is really, it's a Parks Department. And then I thought about Northampton, and, you know, where I grew up and stuff like that. And like, oh, yeah, okay. I mean, I see how these things evolve in municipalities. And I'm sure that there were rock-solid, excellent people like yourselves who ran for public office over the years. And because of people doing a good job, more and more was probably given out. And, but also going to Terry's point, and what Jerry said as well, times change, things change. And we are at a point now where, and I don't want to refer to you guys as a luxury. You're not a luxury. Again, you've been working very hard and doing a fantastic job. But I think as elected officials ourselves, with the purview over presenting a long-range plan to town meeting and knowing what else we have to nickel and dime and find a way to fund, everything has to be running as efficiently as possible. We have to be able to look at the taxpayers and say, we looked at it. We looked at this side. We looked at that side. And so I agree with Terry's point. I think it behooves us to really take a look at one extreme end of the spectrum, which is maybe we go, we decide that the Park and Rec Commission, as we've known it, is no longer necessary. However, the function needs to be performed. And somehow, we figure out who is best to do that and who they report to. The other side of it, being what Diane suggested, is maybe the best solution is to take all of the programming and look at it as more of a leisure services. But what does that mean? Because we also have people functioning in those jobs. And again, I'm a fan of natural attrition, not putting ourselves in a position to really lay anybody off or eliminate a position. So, yeah, I would support going forward and at least doing the analysis so we can stand up in front of town meeting if and when the questions are asked. And they will be asked. And quite frankly, they're already being asked because the taxpayers know and can smell that we're kind of be looking for revenue based on everything that we've been talking about. And so they want to make sure any opportunity doesn't slip by.
Well, likewise, a lot of the taxpayers need to be reminded about their children, the seniors and a lot of the library patrons, you know, are voting people. We are the demographics of, when we did up the little spreadsheet for you, you know, we have a lot of kids that we're serving. And we need to remember that we're trying to culminate this for the kids of the town. Obviously, again, Kenny brought up cribbage a couple of years ago. We did that, bought new cribbage boards and do all that. So we're willing to address all different areas.
No pitch night.
Yeah, I know. Well, that'd be a good thing to take on, yeah. I'd be there.
Cribbage is something that seniors like to do, too.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's why we did it. And I believe Ken, that was Kenny was trying to broaden that. So I'm saying in horseshoes, so we're-
Actually, botchy.
Botchy. So we're trying to broaden it.
I think it was a cornhole.
Yeah, got it all. So, Jane?
So what is the age of the population Park and Recs currently is serving?
Do you want to address that, Kathy? I mean-
Well, we basically serve-
Preschool through six.
Preschool.
Yeah, preschool through six. That is our massive amount.
And what is that number?
Per activity?
How many?
Oh.
In the overall population of the town?
Oh, how many do we have?
But it's not just the town.
It's 300 and some-
There are also some draft matters.
There are actually a larger percentage that-
We're sort of a throughway. And our summer programs are from actually a lot of out-of-town children going, parents going to UMass and so forth. So we have a program at the Methodist Church. It's almost full because that's a throughway to UMass. And it's not all Hadley kids. So that's the first time we've used that building.
I thought on that spreadsheet that we gave, and gosh, it must have been about a year ago.
Stuff like that somewhere.
Up to like, I thought, 1,003rd. Wasn't that the way you calculated?
Yeah, how many are in town? Oh, that was your question, right?
Or how many in town, yeah.
Well, I mean, we have people at Senior Center who are not Hadley residents.
Right, right.
Right, right.
And I know some senior centers charge, not us, but some, Amherst and Northampton, charge more for out-of-towners using their programs. Do you do that?
We had done that. The reality is, is that we have kids from out-of-town at our schools. So it's kind of like, even if you go school of choice, so you get to do an after-school program because you're in Hadley Elementary and you're doing an after-school program in that.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're actually technically out-of-town, so do you charge? You know, so it's like, it got a little dicey. But you can come up with another plan. It's just, that's why we stopped doing that. It's different.
So I'm sorry, I forgot. The number was?
I think it's, it's, what is it, 25 times 13 plus preschools?
So what percent of those?
325.
Thank you. I thought I said, yeah, I thought I said 325. And then preschool's probably like 60.
But that is a good point, too. That's right. But that's something to be taken into account. I think that is important, you know, there's Northampton Leisure Services that, or Northampton Park and Rec that Hadley kids go to.
Yep.
Amherst Leisure Services that Hadley kids go to. And then we're servicing out-of-towners, too. So the question is, where's the cost?
Madam Chair?
So, yes, sir.
You know, I really feel like they're here for one reason, and now they're being singled out for something completely different. So it leads me to ask the question, is the library a luxuriant? Do we need a new library? Look at the amount of money that's going to cost. Do we need that? Is it a luxury?
Taxpayers will tell us.
You know, so I know.
The taxpayers will tell us.
This is where we're going, and I don't think it's fair for them at all.
Terry?
I don't think anybody's here to say there should be no Park and Rec. Because by far, I'm here to support them. What I'm trying to say is, can we utilize these services throughout our town and make it better?
And I don't have a problem with that, Terry. And I think the finance committee can do that. Join them all together, find out if there's duplication, you know? If there's duplication, eliminate it.
That's fine, and that's what I'm asking.
Very simple. I don't think we have to have a committee to do this.
And if I wanted to talk to the little finance, is I'll ask it, the finance-
No, I'm not yelling. I just have a loud voice. You want me to really yell?
No.
So, so all I'm asking is if the select board could agree about making a committee or whatever of a group of people to just get together and look at overview of all these departments? And is there any way we can do shared services and save some money somewhere? Or make more money?
Or make more money, that's right.
That's right. Or make more money when you have more people together and putting a lot of all their knowledge together. It's not, it's not going to hurt anybody to do it.
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't a new discussion. We've known that the North Hadley Hall's been sold since the taxpayers claimed to do that. So the reality is, is that I think that we, and I just wanted to recall that we do have a park right now, and we haven't had one for a long time. So we have an exciting active park.
It's on New Johnson, too.
Yeah, it is. So I just wanted, I knew it is. But if we're talking about park commissions, you know, there could be some other different role for them. But finally, there is a park that's really exciting, and they could do that and come together with other terms for the recreation as well. But it's not faulting it. There really is a park now, you know?
Missy, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to follow that up. I was just going to say that. Is that I would like, I fully support what Terry is saying. But I would like Park and Rec to have the opportunity to come back and present what is the long-term vision of us, because we do have an exciting park. And I would like the opportunity to try to work with the library and work with the Senior Center on our, on our own as part of this position. I think it behooves us to try to work it out ourselves and see, you know, we don't want to have two Easter egg, Easter bunnies in town.
I'm excited to hear you mention the Methodist Church.
We've been asked to use our costumes by other departments. And I think that, you know, we have great relationships that we can. I'd like the opportunity for us to work it out first among ourselves and come, come back with that long-term vision. And then at that time, say- Have us to deliver.
How does this fold in?
You know, because in that, in those discussions, some of those joint things can be discussed. And that's kind of one of the things, when I saw that job position for the library, and I'm like, well, I want to make sure we're not overstepping each other's toes. And we are using, utilizing resources. And, you know, what space do you have available that we could use, and vice versa? So I think that all our hearts are in the right place. But I would just ask that we were given the opportunity to do that on our own as part of the position we already have first.
First, yeah.
And then maybe just to table that till after we've had that presentation is my request.
What's your relationship with the Methodist Church? What's the availability or the?
Well, Kathy made that.
It was just a space that, when we had originally talked about them all, because we're gonna do a sort of barter system with the yeah, so when I had originally talked about that, they didn't feel comfortable being there because there's a
Who didn't?
The mad science program that we've been working with probably for ten years, so they didn't feel comfortable about sending their kids to a dark hallway down a public hall to a public bathroom, so I said, here are some other places in town. They called the Methodist Church, the Methodist Church rented a space to them.
So we're using it.
And so our program has a space at the Methodist Church.
We're using it.
And Missy's looked at the Most Holy Redeemer and the Congregational Church here for other spaces, but those are, you know, nothing is autonomous anymore, neither are our fields, so that is a, that's the real fact that's changed dramatically.
Right, evidence brokers, including the, the facilities.
Exactly, so there's no, you know, office space, no, that, that, so that, that is a big story to Park and Rec. It's changed regardless of the people or persons in any position.
And, and there are other spaces in town that, you know, past the, the common was kind of a, you know, wasn't open for events and we, you know, the park commission would like to roll that in as a, as a, an area that we're able to run more events on and, and control the traffic on and, you know, sponsor more events on, as well as the, the reservoir. You know, Kenny was a big advocate of trying to get the, you know, the reservoir under the fold. We don't even issue the permits to go see that for whatever reason, and that's, you know, perhaps something, it was one of these anachronisms that has been there for a while that may need to be reviewed. And another open space which may or may not still be around is the North Hadley Field, that's, I know that's all on hold, but that hasn't, you know, there's still there, so there, there are other spaces in town.
We do need bathrooms and
One thing I just feel compelled to be, be clear about, just in case anybody from the library or the council on aging is watching tonight. Yeah, this is a discussion, it's a discussion and, you know, it's, again, it's inviting a cooperative, collaborative conversation. Use one of his favorite words, but that's what we're talking about right now, is we're talking about a conversation. Terry, you want to?
No.
Okay.
Then I, I support what Melissa offered and let's just go with that right now and
Go for that and then put it on an agenda before twelve weeks is up, obviously.
That's what we'll bring up once you guys vote, because we're ready to talk about.
Okay, so the idea then would be to have Melissa and probably have you be the point person then on coordinating a conversation across the other town departments with other programming and then come back with, with the commissioners with more of what Jerry's referring to as kind of the vision for this programming and then we'll be wrapping that back into finance committee's recommendation as well.
I think it'll go hand in hand and that'll give more information like, like Jerry was saying, for all of us.
Do you plan on going out and hiring a full-time?
Well, I think that's what Melissa was aiming at with Joyce putting the motion out there is
No, I'm asking the board.
Yes, we actually came here tonight with the understanding that there was a question of us from the select board, but we have the job description and I think last, I keep saying to you Joyce, but I remember you saying, it's your baby, go, go with it. Maybe you didn't say it's our baby, but, you know, but you know, you said go.
But the town has hiring practices that need to be followed.
Right, like you say, right.
Okay.
So and I, for everything that we've done, David and I, having a human resources management background, I've put stuff in emails and I've put stuff in writing between David and I, so that's why I email a lot, David. So having fifteen years human resources experience, I think that I've tried to, for the first time, getting at least an interim, follow the directives, working with Joan on that, so, yeah, and now for, that was what we were coming here to clarify from the Park and Rec Commissioner end is we're ready to post it, we're ready to put it on the board down there, we under, we just want to know the timing and stuff, because I haven't done that here with the town level. David, you want to say something?
So this is a department head, ultimately it's here higher. It gets posted, it gets advertised, we put it on the website, we give people an opportunity to submit their applications.
But you may have to, Bob and we have depended on the information that comes back, that, that comes back from you. What's the job description, we have what you're looking for today, when you come back and everybody talks about where we're going and what's available, we need to determine, it'll be, it may change.
Right, but that, I mean, that's my concern because we post a, for the sake of argument, now, is it a thirty-hour job or more?
Kathy, yeah, Kathy's replacement's name.
So, so same, so you're posting a thirty-hour job that's with benefits within a certain pay scale. People in good faith apply for this and then we have a subsequent discussion in fairly short order that may lead us in a different direction. And I mean, that's, that's gonna be tough.
Library job description and I'm not sure Kathy had mentioned the senior center hiring an activities person, but I know Kathy was helping out Suzanne with a lot of the programming. Well, you did the bus trips, fifteen bus trips.
I only did that and gave it right back.
Yeah, and she handed it back, so what I'm saying is a lot of that stuff is stuff that Park and Rec has administratively started on or done, so I don't see the scope going too much further beyond things that we've had in our
You're hiring at two different departments and you're saying we shouldn't proceed in, in, in ours at this time, even though we're, we're in
Yeah, I don't think we should hold it up. Because it's And she's out of the twelve weeks and then we're, we're stuck with us three who have full-time or over-full-time jobs.
The problem you run into, and, and again, I know private industry, we can't even contemplate comparing the two, but the reality is in another organization, if, again, there's natural attrition and natural attrition by its very nature implies unpredictability. People get sick, they die, they quit, whatever, or they get promoted into another job. So it creates a void within that organization and at that point in time, management takes a look and says, okay, what do we do now? The alternative to natural attrition is forced personnel changes and I think that in town here, we've been, we have a longstanding history of, of not going there. And to the point being made tonight, that doesn't presume that we're looking at staff reductions either, because we haven't talked about that at all. But if there's an opportunity to do something differently and more efficiently, now is the time to do it. As soon as that person gets hired, they become a fixed cost to this town, because we're not gonna turn around and lay them off. I mean, I can't, I shouldn't say never, but I mean, that, that would certainly not be what we would want to do. So I certainly respect where you guys are coming from, because it's like you're trying to figure out a way to get this programming in place because it matters, but nor do I feel comfortable pulling the trigger and saying, yeah, just go ahead and let's just assume it's thirty hours a week and off we go, because it happens to be in the budget. And it's not clear that it's a hundred percent under the purview of the Park and Rec Commission, which I, I think, David, was what you, you had implied at a previous meeting, but on further research have determined it's really not the case.
Commission.
But we didn't hire Kathy, we didn't hire Julian Keller.
I'm afraid if we wait, it's twelve weeks.
When those positions became available.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Those were, those were different times when we weren't asking the same questions, so, I mean, it's
But you've, you've already set precedent.
It's, it's very clear to me that you're the hiring and firing authority here, if you want to delegate that authority, that's up to you.
Well, I don't think we were ever involved with their hiring and firing.
Yeah.
Terry?
I, I just see that, you know, people assume or they see things, you know, pay scale, other departments see employees coming in and the pay scales, I don't know if you guys have a set way of doing that and so forth, but I, I hear and I see other people questioning how these departments are hiring their new employees and starting off at rates that we have people here that work ten years and don't even get that rate and so
Or retiring.
Right, or so you're causing, so what it causes is issues with other departments, so I think it came about because, you know, other departments are looking at everything and saying, hey, I'm working fifty hours a week, I'm only getting paid thirty-five, there's no money in the budget, but this one's coming in getting paid this, this one takes this, you know what I'm saying? So the departments and the employees are talking and we're trying to set an example across the board to be consistent with everybody.
And I think we have time to do that.
I absolutely agree with you.
Well, I think that there needs to be collaboration between the boards as to what the pay rate schedules and hours are gonna be.
Yes.
Absolutely agree with you and it should be consistent with the hiring practices for the rest of the town. I still think you guys should hire it, I think we need to work together to determine a schedule and, and a rate. That, that would be my suggestion, but I would still, I, I don't want to assume the responsibility of hiring
Yeah, not interviewing and all this.
Who you choose to hire to run your elected position department.
Didn't I say that a little while ago about us following policies and procedures? But that's, that's fine, but I think we all need to follow the same guidelines of what the rest of the town is doing too when we do hire somebody.
That's, yeah, we're looking for guidance and then we're trying to
Everyone wasn't looking at that.
To the bottom of them.
Which we weren't privileged to, yeah, so I mean, I think that's all that we're asking for. I, I certainly don't want to be the one to hire, that's your privilege to do that and I've said it.
So everybody on the board's comfortable with them posting a thirty-hour a week job?
They, I'm, as far as I'm concerned, they are the same as we are. There are one member of their board and they're responsible, just like we are, for their Park and Rec department, just like we're responsible, just like the school committee is responsible for the schools.
Okay, but again, I'm just
I have no problem with that board at all, I don't know why you want to try to abolish it.
It's not
We don't want to abolish it.
The wording that has come up and that's why it's being addressed, in my opinion. If you want to vote to change the wording, so if there is no question by anybody, then go ahead and do that.
If we want to charter the Park and Rec Commission and create a mission statement that includes everything that they've been doing and to be honest with you, if we're going to continue in this vein, we should, because we're just, again, kicking a problem down the road to whoever else just happens to be elected up here. So, you know, if that's the direction that we want to go in, let's clean it up, but right now, it's, it's a mess. And John, I'm also being respectful of all of the times that you said, if I had it my way, I'd put on a hiring freeze. So you're saying something different tonight.
No, I'm not, no, I'm not, I am absolutely not saying that. The position is needed and I think everybody stressed a pay scale to look at and a universal pay scale for all the boards. I think we've covered that quite clearly.
Can you extend the twelve-week interim thing?
No, no, that relates to federal law having to do with unemployment.
I don't see a problem with us keeping that twelve-week schedule off with coming back in July, excuse me, presenting the information during, to, to get that, we have to work that out anyway.
Right.
Which we were already have, we met tonight before this meeting and started. Excuse me, so I, I don't see that as needing to extend it.
I'm just trying to give you a solution.
No, I, I hear, I think we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, and, and I, I thought that's where you were going, but, but again, I'm also respectfully hearing Diane say, we need to get this position posted and posted now, but I mean, it's just what you're saying, she's just saying If she's saying let's get posted so we can come back and present to you our candidates or however, whatever.
We're talking about the programming.
Right, we, that's what we're saying, but
I thought you were saying
I believe it goes hand in hand, I believe it goes hand in hand, that in our discussions of what our future will determine, like the job description and the needs and posting that was coming back with the justification.
I mean, I see myself at a point to email David the job description, David reviews it and then approves or disapproves, I don't, I don't even know.
Comes back to the recommendation.
Comes back with the recommendation and then the board says okay and up it goes.
Meantime, you're working on what the programs are gonna be in the future.
In the meantime, they're, they're doing great.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's up.
Okay, so is that how everybody wants to proceed?
Yes.
Sounds good, I don't think we need to vote on it, this is a discussion, so, right, you want us to vote on it?
Well, I'm still not clear if we come back with the recommendation from, from there, where is it, what's the next step for proceeding with the posting of the position, is there some kind of decision gate that this board has to, to vote on before we go ahead and, and then if we get approval from David on the job description, can we post the job?
Will he also provide the pay scale?
David.
I think they have to.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the description.
Well, I'm just curious how you came up with the twenty out of twenty-five dollar figure for the interim, our early rate.
That had nothing to do with it.
Yeah, that's an interim, yeah.
Let's, I, I would say
I want to make sure it's consistent across the board.
Once that gets back and you guys come back with, with the, with that, we're gonna, I, I, again, I, I'm, you guys are elected officials, if you guys tell us that's what you're gonna do, we have a budget, you're in the budget plan at this point in time. If that doesn't come to fruition, we have next budget period to say, we need to trim this and this is why we do. It's my humble opinion, that's what town meeting voted your thing. To Molly's point, to Molly's point, let's, let's figure this out and figure out where we're going with this so that we can do this the right way and, and solve a lot of problems, get the information, the job description to David, David, you take a look at it based on, on, on currently their hiring practices within the town, what it's gonna be, we'll get that back to you and let's, let's go forward with it from there, we have a meeting next week that, I'm sure you won't be able to do that by next week. Then we have, what, two weeks, is it two weeks?
Yeah, twenty-first is pretty packed.
Yeah, but we can't possibly, they can't possibly do that in a week.
The twelfth, July twelfth?
July, right.
For the new hires, is that what you mean?
No.
No.
No, 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 no.
Your Park and Rec's gonna be in the future.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
No, no.
That'll be July twelfth.
Do you think July twelfth is good to come back with the?
It's a month.
Do you think that time, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah. And well, she has to coordinate too with the library and council. My only chance are. Oh, you want, the library's here.
Yep.
And I'm in the senior center.
But you want to do the budget for, you want Park and Rec to go and find out what all the other departments are gonna do that budget?
Melissa suggested.
Yeah, what she said.
I thought she was gonna do our, I wrote down our Park and Rec long-term plans, our own department.
Well, and I think the point is it's hard for her to do that without talking to the others.
Our programming in town to make sure So you guys want to help with that. So you'll meet with the other, okay.
David?
Yeah, maybe the commissioners would like to meet with the other, as a group effort.
First place I would start would be the service delivery plan, because it's got a lot of that information already laid out and I'll make sure you have a copy of that.
I'll email that to you tonight, I'll email you the job description tonight.
He doesn't have TV at home, so he'll just read it.
I, he's a night owl too, like me, or just I hit him on a good day, because
Go home and have a beer.
So, so if we have, I won't say clear direction, but kind of, sort of clear direction on this going forward, then
you're also here tonight to talk about Zoturka Park.
Yes, well, I think
The bid.
Yeah, so we, we went out to bid for the phase two, oh, there it is. Phase two reconstruction of Zoturka Park, phase one consisted of grubbing and clearing the property. There were some initial discussions with the planning board, some changes were made to the, to the plan, particularly removing a couple of features that people didn't want. And so we're now back to site stabilization, soil stabilization and additional work of lumbing and seeding at the Zoturka Park. So this is reconstruction phase two. We received only one bid, we sent out three packages to local landscaping outfits. Omasda Landscaping came back with a base bid of thirty-six thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars with an alternate of eighty-eight hundred twenty-three. The alternate consists of the hydrosealing and seeding, hydroseeding and five inches of topsoil in the location of the former tennis courts. Total price of forty-five thousand three sixty-one. We have a budget for this project, which is currently sixty thousand dollars, five ninety-four and fifty cents. So we reviewed the bids, it's responsive, so we have a lowest and responsive bidder in Omasda Landscaping for the base bid and the alternate combined top price of forty-five thousand three sixty-one.
How does that like advertise for the bidding process and if, if you don't like that, um, bid, do you have the right to send it back out again?
We don't have to accept the bid.
You don't have to accept it. So what's the length that you guys put that out for?
This, this project was bid under, under the public works portion of procurement laws, so that requires posting in town hall, solicitation of at least three written bids. We put it on the website and that complies with the law in this case.
Isn't it seven days?
Two weeks or something?
Uh, we, I think it was more like three weeks.
It was.
I'm a professional at start scraps, proceeding or anything up to, would like some comparisons, that's all.
It's rate though.
It's what?
Well, I get that it's rate, so.
Why wasn't it put in a periodical?
Didn't have to, speed was the essence.
I think it's cost us a lot more to get these bids back because we didn't do that. And I know a person like Wagner would, wouldn't be anywhere near this bid if he was, knew about it, he probably never knew about it. That's what he does, he gets rid of stumps and he's much bigger than Omasda. Omasda hires him to come in and do his stumps.
Yeah, it's more than stumps, it's the stabilization and I'll, have you looked at the entire?
You know, and the other, the alternate one, has there been any discussion with our DPW director? We stockpile loam, we have trucks to bring it there, tennis courts aren't very big. I, hydro seeded four thousand square feet, cost me four hundred bucks.
That's awesome, you want to do it?
No, no, I didn't do it, I, I hired a company to do it, but it seems like an extravagant amount of money in this bid, to me.
Yes, it's more than just, I, I appreciate that, it's more than just the tennis court, all of the commissioners talked to it as well, but it is more than just the tennis court, it turned into a parking lot for years. And so it's more than just the square footage of the small regulation-sized tennis court that was there before. It, it is actually a large portion, we just are terming it where the tennis court was.
So is it asphalt removal?
It has, the asphalt has been removed, it's actually adding six, what is it?
Five inches, it says here alone.
Five inches, thanks, of loam and then seeding and then there is all the stump grinding, there's also additionally putting in shrubbery over on Mr. Dickinson's side because he had requested that sooner than later.
That's on the bid, but the alternate, I'm just referring to the alternate, is the tennis court area only.
Oh, you're just referring the alternate. But, well, right, again, the tennis court area has changed in square footage, not just the tennis court, it turned into a parking lot at the time, but I, I, I do hear what you're saying.
Donald, do you want to make amendment that it should be rebid?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we rebid the process and make sure it goes into periodicals. So everybody has a chance to pick it up for the bids.
So there's a motion made, does somebody want to second the motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, for discussion.
For discussion.
Would it hurt to ask the DPW to see what they can do, at what level they can do things and then most certainly maybe Marlowe can hire out or find somebody else that can do the things that he can't do?
So we have
Is that more cost efficient? I don't know who can do it, I'm just asking.
Yeah, we have asked him, he's Yeah, we have asked them, he's not in that situation.
So, if we ask DPW to do the work, then certainly can ask them, but, you know, we have to think about the liability of, on the other side of it, is that you're performing work, and then you're responsible for the quality of that work on the other end. So I would have a, I'd have a conversation with DPW, not only in terms of whether they can take the work, but whether, whether that's a good idea at all.
And we have that conversation with Marlowe, and he's been totally upfront about wanting to help us and all, but there are places, that professional work, and this kind of work, in this amount of money that is going through. For example, I'm sure we have people who might give us a shovel and a hand to put in the arboretum, but then that person isn't gonna come back and maintain it, and if something happens, then, oh, well. And, you know, that is more of a waste of money, right? So that's why we have all the professionals coming in and doing it, rather than the neighbor next door trying to help out.
And really, it's fifteen thousand dollars under budget anyway, do you have plans for the other fifteen thousand dollars?
Yes, we have a nine thousand, like, don't exactly quote me, it's under ninety-six, it's under ninety-seven thousand dollars for Berkshire Design, this last phase, they'll be billing us out.
Ninety-seven hundred.
Ninety-seven hundred, yeah, sorry, what did I say?
A thousand.
Oh, well. I think in gold.
She's hoping that she has nine thousand.
Yeah, so it's nine thousand, nine thousand six hundred and something, something, coming forward. And they have given us pro bono amounts, and I'll be pleased to tell you that, and I'll give you that amount soon. But we're very excited that they've given us that funding and that amount of money. It's a beautiful gift from them, it really will help us.
Andy, do you wanna say something?
I was gonna say that, you know, in a single bid situation, I'm more than okay with sending it back out again.
Okay, so there's a question whether or not you guys are okay with the timing?
Yeah, I am anyway, I can't speak for the rest of the.
If I might just say something, we're in a crunch, I just completely disagree with my commissioner. And the fact that we're in a crunch, we're wanting to bring more, we're asking CPA for more funding, and that would be in our fall meeting. And we need to see, and they really appreciate work being done. We'd like this at a step process, and so if we get this phase done today, now, starting right away, that will lead us into our fall town meeting. We're going to planning board on the eighteenth of this month. These, this process is gonna take a long time, and then we're in the winter months. We followed all the procurement laws, and here we are.
But if we, if we rebid, David, how?
How long would that take?
You were asking for a, let me tell you.
We have all the paperwork done, it's just a rebid, right?
Hold on one second.
Donald, where did you say it wasn't posted that you think would generate more interest?
In papers, newspapers.
Oh, I thought you meant the periodical.
Well, periodical is a newspaper, right? It's an old term.
Yeah, no, I know what you mean. I thought you meant like the state.
Oh, you mean like an estate?
The website.
I just saw somebody local sees it, either Springfield, or, you know, Daily Hampshire Gazette would suffice me for sure.
All right, so the, so the central register has a published publication date of the twenty-first, and so we'd have to provide at least two weeks after that, so we're talking about mid-July.
So, for bid?
For bid.
To have it come back.
For return.
For return.
For return.
And a lot of these companies obviously have their summer planned. I'm hoping people in that world understand that, so, you know, we have a, I'm just saying, it may step us back in a place that we might not wanna be, but, again, it's, this is the commissioner's job, so.
And I do, I mean, I have not done landscaping for many years, I mean, I don't know, yeah, I mean, I, if you're saying you've gotten bids lower, we only got one bid in.
That's where the problem is, if you had three bids, I wouldn't have any problem with it at all. Because I could compare it, I have nothing to compare this with.
Quite honestly, if these other, if the other companies are too busy to do the job, you may end up coming back with one bid anyway.
That's most likely the case.
And he may not even rebid, I don't know what he's gonna do.
Okay, well, there's a motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Any more information anybody wants to know? Do you have any sage advice?
We went through the limited bid advertising, because time was of the essence, I was told, on this project. Certainly, if you bid statewide, which is what we would do for free, you would get a lot more bids. So, if you wanna save some money, and get, see a project that's done in August and September, or do you wanna go with what you have right now, and see that work happen in July and August?
Did Omasda provide a start date?
Well, it'd be nice to get it started.
Uh, no, they did not.
I don't remember saying one. Did they, they commit to a start date, Omasda?
I think that, wasn't there something in there for a start date?
I don't know if I see it on your computer, I don't, I don't have it.
You know, just a point of interest, uh, July, August is the worst time to seed.
Oh, yeah.
You come to fall time, you eliminate the weeds, and your final product is gonna be much better.
What is the start date?
Yeah, there's a lot more to it than, we could probably just, what you're saying is just do the second part, the seeding part, 'cause that, that again, like, Mr. Westkew was just saying, that's what, fifteen thousand dollars of the entire amount? So there's a whole lot more to do, like stump grinding, planting.
Can we do that, David?
What?
Can you just take that one piece out you're worried about, which is the seeding?
Can we accept a portion of a bid?
The base bid.
Base bid? Right, the base bid, which is everything else but the seeding, and the.
That's where we're gonna save the money if we go out with the bid. This other one, we can save money by possibly using the highway department. So, the thirty-six thousand, I think that could be reduced significantly with multiple bids.
So what's the pleasure of the board, you heard the recommendation?
Motion seconded and enforced, sir.
You heard the recommendation of the Park and Rec Commission?
From Park and Rec Commission?
Well, I mean, we have had a chance to talk about it, Andy, you know, said.
Are you posted tonight? Are you posted tonight?
Yes.
Yeah.
In a different location.
Do you need five minutes?
If we can have it.
Is it okay, or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they post, they can bend the meeting, and then they moved over here, that's perfectly legal.
Okay, so you guys wanna take five, we'll move on to something else.
Go over there?
No, no. Come on back in when you're ready. Kathy, but we did not know about the possibility.
We're back to the same.
You saw the bid, right? You saw the bid.
So David's gonna have to.
Can I just ask Kathy a question that's off topic, since she is leaving her direct? I just, I want to thank you for all your services.
Thank you.
You and I are friends, and I've worked with her many years, as far as basketball, and coordination, and so forth. And I hope to, I know Zoturka Park is, is kind of like home for you, Kathy, and I, I hope that you continue, um, working to seed, especially with whatever happens with the new Park and Rec, and not the new employee with Park and Rec. So I hope to see that you still wanna continue that.
Oh, yes, I'm on the core committee, but I must admit that our, my name is Zoturka, but more importantly, I'm a, I am a taxpayer, and this Park and Rec has been my baby for, what, twelve years? And I think that this is the only future of Park and Rec, if I might be obvious. It would be our only autonomous field, that we would be able to use for programming. We're suggesting a pavilion there, which would also be a stay-in shelter in case of a storm. And we have plans to have electricity and water in the future, but it'll be there. And so it actually is about the only future of Park and Rec at the moment, and I feel strongly about that. It's nice that it was dedicated my grandfather by select board back in eighty-three, four. But more importantly, it really is the future of programming for Park and Rec. It's the only place, everyone else has a space, and you keep saying, "No, we don't, we do." It's Park and, it's Zoturka Park, and I agree that chapter forty-five and all of the sections above do lay out just that, not hiring and firing, and it is just the parks, and so I feel very strongly about that.
Has the band shell been eliminated?
I've heard something to that effect.
The amphitheater has been taken out, yes, there was some discussion about parking, and really amazing concerts that some people thought might be able to go there, and so it was a numbers issue, so we took it out, yeah.
Okay, I listen to you.
But you will have the natural scape that was gonna make that amphitheater.
I think once it gets going, families can have birthday parties there.
Right.
It will hopefully generate some money to sustain itself, and I think it's a great thing.
I think everybody appears to support it, the.
I can't wait to see it.
Yeah, I think the common should be used far more as well.
Absolutely.
As long as there's fencing.
Parking's an issue over there.
And for kids' programming, fencing is very important, and like, like the Asparagus Festival used that fencing, there are reasons for that, state reasons, but we could easily fence in that, temporarily fence it in. Yeah, well, that too.
Did they charge for the parking?
Handling kids.
No, no, it's if it was suggested, don't.
And they funnel them in.
But I think, I just wanna say, I think the officers that did detail for that did an awesome job.
Yeah.
They did a good job, in my opinion.
So we're gonna try to get, we just have a couple more items, and that's. Okay. So water and sewer abatement on Huntington Road. David, there's a request for an abatement from a homeowner due to, it looked like they had a faulty bathroom facility, also known as a toilet, and, so, it sounds like that caused excess water usage, and unfortunately, the homeowner was not able to get a plumber in in a timely manner. And as a result of that, they're requesting an abatement.
Motion to deny.
Second, third.
That was fast.
All in favor of the motion to deny?
Aye.
Upstein.
Okay.
Question, Diane?
Diane?
Yeah, we just had a quick question.
Sure.
It did come up when we were in here. Did you pull up that information to see, we don't have the paperwork, if Omasda committed to a start date on his work?
Is it spelled out in the contract that there's a timeframe it needs to start?
I don't see anything like that.
Okay, so the only other agenda item we have this evening is select board goals and objectives, which is a continuation from last week. And, kinda hard to jump into that one, hopefully we come up with a recommendation soon. Jerry, would you like to give an update on the Red Sox score?
Six-three, the Sox are winning.
I just thought you might know that off the top of your head.
Fifth inning.
Well, if you wanted to do announcements while we're waiting?
Sure.
Yeah, well, and actually, I just have something to mention, because, and it actually relates to use of the common. The Amherst Area Chamber of Commerce is trying very hard to increase membership, and specifically outreach to the town of Hadley, in Belcher Town. I think that's the greatest opportunity for growth going forward, and recognize that there needs to be a perceived value on the part of those businesses in those towns to feel like they're getting some value out of the chamber. And one of the initiatives that was discussed was, people were, you know, pretty excited about the Asparagus Festival, but again, that's WGBY coming in and using the common, but very much appreciate the fact that we do have the common over here. Amherst does a taste of Amherst on their common, and what the thought is right now is, the Amherst Area Chamber may be proposing that in the fall, not necessarily this fall, but even a year out, that there be a Hadley showcase. And the idea behind the Hadley showcase would be to really focus on the farming community in particular, microbreweries, vineyards, and things like that, so that it doesn't conflict with, and take away anything from the Asparagus Festival, but an opportunity to bring businesses in town together, and it wouldn't necessarily be limited to just the farmers and the wineries and the microbrews. But, again, truly a showcase to the town of Hadley, to highlight for folks everything that's going on here. And the Chamber would be wanting to put that on cooperatively with the business community. So I'm just mentioning that that's something in discussion, obviously, the first step in that process would be getting approval to use the common.
Sort of like a taste of Hadley?
Well, and yet, there could be some.
More farm.
But also, I mean, even some of the really cool things that the farms are doing, that are experimental with the university, like some education around it as well. Again, don't want to overlap too much with the Asparagus Festival, so there would have to be a different, and, you know, perhaps we wanna highlight, you know, garage door owners and.
We don't want our town common to either look like Amherst Town coming, or Belcher Town, because they certainly haven't kept theirs up.
But with our open minds that we always help and share up here, if we brought the farmers and the residents, who the retail business is in, and kinda found out if they felt it would be helpful to them, anything we can do to help the business in Hadley, I am all for.
Oh, I am too.
I'm just a tad ashamed that we have someone else do our Asparagus.
They even suggested a cornhill tournament.
A fall festival type thing.
Exactly, yeah, like a Hadley Fall Festival.
In nineteen oh nine, in nineteen oh nine, there was a tent on the common for the, for the, two-hundred-fiftieth, that had twenty-five thousand people underneath that. It's a big common.
Yes, if you have an update at that time?
Okay, so we talked about it briefly, and there's a couple of points here involved, which of which, one of which is that since there seems to be no start date, completion date involved, we don't know whether or not the seasonal aspect would really come into play, if they award it in the contract, and take their time to get to it. And honestly, responsibility to the taxpayers, I feel that we really should consider an opportunity of soliciting multiple bids, having something to compare it by.
You said I, but you mean we, right?
I said I, but I do mean we as a commission. So we all voted unanimously to support the resolicitation of the bids, and distribute, and improve the distribution, so we can perhaps get into a periodical that is specific to that, or, you know, notify local contractors who have had, passed, or find out where they're gonna be looking for stuff like that.
I think the CPA was the other, we don't think that that's really gonna affect, 'cause they're not meeting until.
We don't meet until, I'm sorry, CPA doesn't meet until end of August.
So as long as it's done by then, right? Well, you're on CPA now, so.
And so you can specify.
David, if David can be a little bit aggressive with making sure we, if you can kind of try to ensure we.
Put a wiggle in it?
Yeah. Not a wiggle, and it just put a little fire. So what are we talking about for timing now? That it will come back, that it will come back?
Twenty-first.
So if we advertise on the central register, that advertisement gets published on the twenty-first, you've got to give them two weeks at least after that, so.
We don't have to wait till then, though, we can get it in the local newspapers, the central register is two weeks. But we have time now to get it out in the local business, in the papers, right?
Yeah.
Is there anything else where we think we should post it?
I have a question, can you do that Town News?
You know, where if people have elected to sign up for the town, can you do it on there?
So we will put it on the website, we'll go through comm spy, we'll do it as a central register, and local posting, local media, and we'll get the word out.
And there's nothing to prevent anybody from contacting a possible bidder and saying, "Hey, did you know that Hadley has a bid outstanding?"
Oh, yeah.
Right, so word of mouth.
That's what we did before.
Are you going to put a performance date on it?
Great question.
That, that would be good, if we can, I don't know if we can.
To be completed by?
You can, I'll work with the designer on that.
And when's the CPA meeting?
We lost.
So that would be good.
I talked to Mr. Andy Morris Freeman, who's the new chair of the CPA. I don't think he's set a date for the CPA bidding yet. We talked a little bit about the timing for the fall town meeting, which has not been set by the select board, so maybe that's something we could do tonight, but.
I'm with Donald, too, I wouldn't, I don't wanna see any grass in before September anyways. Everything else can get done.
Okay, so there's a motion made and seconded to rebid.
To rebid, okay.
Yes, and then we have the recommendation.
And we have a recommendation from the park commissioners as well. So all in favor of the rebid?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you say I don't?
Yes. To his own motion. He votes against his own motion, that's wrong.
Joyce told me to be quiet, so I said it gently.
Oh, my god.
So anything else before we break up?
Yes, I have one more thing.
Yeah.
I don't think that our commission is gonna be meeting with the select board for Kathy's departure. So, I was looking through pictures, trying to get them posted for our Easter event, and Kathy, I was looking at the things, the pictures of my daughter. I was looking at the things, the pictures of my daughter at all of the events through the years because her age kind of commensurates with your timing being the parking manager. And, yes, and I'd like to thank you very much for all of your time and all of your effort for all of our events. What are, what's going on here? I'm trying to thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm writing that five oh one thing.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you for all the good memories.
Appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Makes me so nice.
Oh, yes, you're all very welcome. We'll be seeing each other in the nearest of futures.
That's right.
We hope so.
Yes.
As a parent? Always had you.
Thank you.
I would like to give this to you.
Thank you so much.
For your service.
That's so cute. I appreciate it, champion of Kathy. Looks very familiar. Thank you.
Looks familiar?
Thanks.
We have to clear up for you.
All right, thank you very much.
Best of luck in your new endeavors.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Yes.
Time for supper?
All right, thank you guys.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last agenda item is the areas of focus. So this is a discussion we started last time about where the select board feels that we should be spending our time between now and Fall Town Meeting.
Home.
Besides going home. And it was suggested that maybe everybody wanted to take a little bit more time to think that through and also offer the opportunity for the finance committee to meet and discuss their priorities as well. So David, should we start with the finance committee?
Yeah, so you have that on your board docs. Finance committee had a meeting the other night. They actually created two priority lists, one priority based upon the importance of the topic and the other priority list based upon how much time they feel they need to invest in each item. So take, for example, the item of ambulance, it's highly important. So they gave that a very high score in terms of its overall importance ranking. But then, since there's an ambulance committee that's working diligently on this issue, doesn't sound like they need to put a whole lot of time into it because that base is already covered, so they gave it a low score in terms of priority of time management. Did I state that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So you have, I think, the first part of that, which is their rankings in terms of importance in terms of the topic. But I don't think we've seen the one for the the time management.
So we just have one.
Yeah.
So do you guys wanna tell us then what your?
Yeah, we don't have to go through line by line or anything. But thinking was, we created that list of importance overall to get us all on the same page with yourselves and the school committee possibly. Maybe in preparation for our next tribe board meeting, but I'm kind of afraid that might not work out. Essentially, yeah, just to get us all on the same page on what we can tackle, what we all feel is important. Boards, we as a board, when we put it on this, were very like-minded, actually, on most of the items. There was some lengthy discussion on some, but not really many disagreements. So what you have in front of you is fairly unanimous kind of rankings across all four of our present members out of five.
So it looks like then from what we're looking at, having a better understanding and a discussion of override options, just getting our arms wrapped around all of that. That's a priority, the fire department and police department staffing and any related capital costs, including buildings, wrapped into that endeavor. And then it looks, and then information technology. Those are kind of the three top. And then from there, it goes into the discussion of town structure. So here, it's listed as charter, but again, are we structured in the most efficient manner to get the job done in the best way for the residents and business business owners? And then wage study. That would, and human resource issues. Looks like those are the two, right? And then the implementation of the Commonwealth Compact Report and DOR recommendations. Okay, so that that's where you guys wanna focus? Okay, is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the finance committee or?
I'll just have a question as far as the town structure. I watch the meetings, I haven't been here, and I'm not sure, I I know how some of you feel on it and so forth. But like this building itself, I feel like, you know, it needs to run very smoothly. And if this building runs and everybody in it and the departments run smoothly, it's gonna show a positive effect on other things. We all all have lives, full-time jobs and so forth, and we volunteer to do these jobs, but they're part-time to all of us. And we, as, you know, we look at things, to me, you know, I think the way it is today, we have to start to look things, look at things as more of running like a business and what's gonna be more effective. You know, that's not always how it's been, and this is only my personal opinion. And going forward, I just feel like if we could look, I was here when the two gentlemen were here telling us, you know, their viewpoints on the different type of management. And I guess I would like to look further more into that. Maybe not them, but, you know, really kind of look at two other towns that have changed their former government that might be our style, you know, our size and so forth. Again, I I just feel like that some of the things, human HR, we have employees here, they don't have anybody to go to, you know? And I think that's important. Right? And that's huge. You know, and I think that, you know, as far as like David, he administrator could, you know, he could do a lot more, but, you know, he has to wait for the other, you know, he has to answer to the five of you. You know, so looking at how much each individual and the time that they spend, is it done efficiently and so forth? And I, you know, I'm not saying that we don't all do a great job because all our hearts are into the town of Hadley, making it a great place to live. And and I think that that still can be there, but I strongly believe that somehow we have to change our government just because the time is changing and we're growing. And, you know, just like the fire station, this town is growing and they need more employees and and so forth. And and I I just think that that's really important to me. And I think that if we could get this building and the departments in it and the staff in it running efficiently, and not saying that it doesn't run efficiently, I'm just saying more efficiently, you know.
I think we can take.
If we could provide the resources there that our town employees need, things will start to play. But I think that to present it to the town people, I mean, that's like a lot for them to swallow all at once, you know? And but basically, I'd rather have all the facts there and and, you know, really look into it and then say to these people, this is how we feel that is gonna make the town run more efficiently and in the way the time is going. And so I think the town structure of the government is really important that, you know, to look into. It's not gonna change overnight, and I get that, but you know what? Next thing you know, one year's gone by, two years gone by, we got two thousand more people in the town, you know, we solved the thing. So I really kind of think it's, you know, we need to kind of set our, you know, personal opinions aside and kind of look at what will be really good for this town for maybe two, three, four years down the road. And you have to start now. So that's my opinion.
Is that just your opinion, or was that how the finance committee kind of?
That's my opinion, I'm not, I I said the same thing at the finance committee meeting. I think that this is why we have two lists, what's really, we need to really spend our time on. And I kind of just feel like the town administration part, IT, the fire department, it kind of all falls in together, you know? And I don't, I find it hard to vote on those separately, though we did do it. And there's lots of great reasons and important reasons for each one of those things. But I kind of feel like it it falls a lot under the town government.
So to reiterate that in the speak for the committee as a whole, basically, the general feeling is that going through the budget this last year and then looking forward, we've kind of identified already and kind of dealt with a lot of the low-hanging fruit. And so, worse all, we're always on the lookout for that, and we like, you know, easy wins. A lot of what we're running up to now all feeds in to essentially the systemic issues that we're kind of facing. So I think the whole committee is really feeling that, and hence why the list in front of you looks the way it does. So the sentiments are also a bit, because we have some new members, and now that we have some time, we really do wanna focus on the education about our options, not jump to any conclusions about what we should do, override or restructuring government, nothing like that, but purely educational, and really try to get the conversations going with the select board, with the school committee and any other bodies appropriate about next steps.
Right, and that includes the town government.
You know, I think everything both of you said is in the DOR report that was prepared for us. Now, I guess we're looking at how are we gonna implement it? All of those areas, we know what our problematic areas are, what is the most important, financial, human resources? That's the answers we're gonna have to come up with as a select board and finance committee. They're all important, but what comes first? You know, that's where the discussion has to be, I think.
You know, and this town, this town is split, whether you like it or not. And for three hundred and something years, a three-member board or a five-member board has run this town. And and you're always gonna have that split, whether you decide to go with the town manager, if the people vote for it or not. There, I I think you're just opening up a whole new can of worms by looking in, looking in that direction in the first place.
It doesn't hurt to look.
No, it doesn't hurt to look.
You have to go that way.
But.
But you need to present options.
Exactly, exactly.
And so it doesn't hurt to look into it.
And we need to start making more decisions here and and start heading in the right direction, quite honestly.
Well, that's up to you to decide, you know, we all, that's my opinion, is that, yes, a three-member or five-member board has always done well. But we all have busy lives, our jobs are more demanding, it's not when we all have Sunday off and have Sunday dinners together. It's not like that anymore. And and I'm not saying it has to change, it's just an option down the road. Hadley could be, it's growing, it's gonna keep growing, to the point where, in my opinion, it's gonna take more than five part-time select board, five part-time finance committee, no HR person to represent the non-union employees here. Those things need to change.
And no clear accountability.
And no clear accountability. It doesn't hurt to look into it, is what I'm saying, okay? It's not gonna change overnight, but what if? Nobody can't, you can't answer the what ifs. Houses are continually building in Hadley, people are moving here, people wanna live in Hadley.
So let's hear from the select board members too. So thank you for sharing that. Park that for a moment. So John, you started, so in the spirit of focusing on on what we should be getting done, so your priorities?
I I I put them down, I mean, the priorities are absolutely pretty much what they said. I mean, we were looking at the HR person, we were looking at at an accounting person. You were looking, or someone on the board was looking at at town manager. I mean, we never really thoroughly looked into this and put it out there. It's back to the same thing, you know? It it's a simple question on the ballot that would would push us in the right direction to make a decision like that, to to follow through with. You know, do you think the town of Hadley is outgrowing the five-member board? Do we need a town manager?
I think you need to educate people.
Yeah, we need to educate ourselves.
It's ultimately up to the people to decide.
I think I think Terry would like to point out the pros and cons of both things so that people can make the decision.
It's about choices. Does your son wanna play hockey or cook or sewing lessons or whatever? You wanna just provide all that?
And and the biggest, and the biggest and the foremost issue is how much is it going to cost?
Right, are you willing to pay for all those changes?
Jerry, what about you?
I I got a little different list that I put together, just trying to understand what I thought would kind of help us kind of manage the town and and our go forward. I think we need to clarify and help our projects along that we have right now, the senior center and the fire department. I think those things need a priority. We linger too long on projects like North Hadley Hall and these things. We need to get options in front of the taxpayers, whether we build it twelve thousand square feet or whether we build it ninety-five hundred, this is the cost, this is the cost. Well, what is your, what is your, the taxpayers' view on it? The second thing I'm looking forward to is getting the ambulance report because I hear nothing but good things coming from that ambulance department as to a go forward, as to how, what we think we should be doing in the future.
No, there's no ambulance department, don't scare people.
I'm sorry, the committee. And I think that's gonna help us understand the firefighters that we're, you know, talking about right now and and bringing that to a little more professional level as we've been speaking about right along. So let's clarify the projects, let's talk, get the ambulance report in front of us. Let's talk about for Fall Town Meeting, where we're gonna be heading with whether or not we're gonna be adding firefighters. And if we don't, you know, where are we heading with that with that issue? Another thing that I think we talk about a tremendous amount is identifying the sources for our free cash. Every year, we have free cash that's available, and every year, it's almost exactly the same amount of money. Where does the free cash come from? And if we take a look at where it comes from, we can either reduce budgets by the amount of free cash that comes and is generated yearly, or we can begin to understand that if we can almost depend on it on a yearly basis, that we can budget towards that direction with a clarity of fixing the budget in the fall like we've been doing for the last fifteen years, okay? Our DPW, we were talking, because that's one of the next things that's in line. We have our our buildings down there that are clearly not not the future of where we're heading. However, on the buildings committee, they went out and researched how much it would cost if we took the trailers out that we currently have there and on a short-term basis, put newer trailers in there and rent them. It's somewhat of a four-year, five-year down the road, a slight fix to it, you're talking about ten thousand dollars a year to eliminate the problem that we have down there. Whether or not that gets done, I think we need to look at it, and I think the buildings committee is gonna be bringing it before us. And I think it's a viable option while we work towards getting the rest of our buildings built and still take care of accommodating our DPW building down there. I've always been a big fan of once a year having all boards meeting, but I would do it different. I I would bring in the boards and and have them discuss where they're going, what they need for help, and how we can help them with what they're doing, how they can help us with what we're doing. You sit at a at a big table and talk about the future of Hadley, where we're going, you understand from, because to Terry's point, can you sit and talk to, watch every finance committee, every school committee, every planning board meeting, every conservation meeting? Or if you sit in a table once a year and try to orchestrate a conversation around, you know, where the town of Hadley's going from everybody's aspect, I think it gives everybody a clearer vision as to where we're going and and how we should get there. I think we need to get a little smarter on some of the things we do. I'm a little sick and tired of every year, once a year, we have the startup of the flea market. For some reason, I think if we just put the the police officer's trailer out there and said flea market Sunday, and everybody says, oh, my gosh, the flea market's coming, graduations happening at Hampshire College, graduations happening in Mount Hoi Ok, it's gonna be a mess down here. I better do my shopping on Thursday. I think we can aver, avoid having problems. We had the exact same thing happen tonight with this bid. I I don't understand why we didn't bid it in our local papers, I do understand why we only got one bid. And I think we need to work smarter when we do things like that. And I think that would go a long way towards making us look more professional and and bringing about better results than than what we do. And I I'm with you, John, I I think the water and sewer rates, I think we let that slide. We saw it with tonight with with regards to the Hampshire Trust, you know, we went four years in a row without a raise and everybody maybe was running around patting themselves on the back, and yet, last year, we got a ten point nine four percent increase. Not so good. So the water, John, I told you I'm agreeing with you.
If you went one, listen, if you went one percent over four years.
That was the last one on my list.
Cause you, cause you knew I had something to say about.
That's it, but I mean, I.
Jeez, I convinced one anyway on the board. How about you other two over there?
I think that helps us look a little better, and and those are the things that I think.
Do I have to sit next to you next meeting, Mrs. Jungle, or what?
For what?
Shake you up a little bit over there.
So what were your final thoughts, Mr. Jerry?
That was my final thought. That was my final thought, was to jack up John before we left.
Much Molly pay to do that?
Madam Chair or Joyce?
Whatever my name is. Too late at this point, nine thirty.
Well, we we keep, I guess we have a problem of just rehashing things over and over again. Well, we, we keep, I guess we have a problem of just rehashing things over and over again, which I get a little bit tired of. We don't have, come to a lot of resolutions on some things. I'd like to finish some projects that we start, which would be fire station or our infrastructure for the public safety. I think that that is at the top of my list with the ambulance. Finishing the senior center, things of that nature. We've started a project, let's get it done. And I think we're working towards that, but we seem to have a problem getting to the finished project on a lot of things that we start. Human resource, that's at the top of my list also, that's been needed for some time. And everything else that, you know, Jerry has said and, you know, things that we do. I think, you know, just having that all fall into place at this point, that's, those are my top priorities.
Okay, Donald?
Well, I think as we go forward, what I wrote about a lot was preparation for the 2019 budget. I think we're going to answer a lot of these questions on the amount of money that we're going to have to be able to put towards 2019. The other thing that bothers me a lot is getting competent people to run for school committee, select board. The cost of being a select one or a school committee member, fire exceeds. Somebody like Jerry, I know when I had a full-time business like Jerry, this position has to cost him fifteen thousand dollars a year, being away from his business for a hundred dollars a month, you know? It's, we just can't sustain that anymore because you don't get anybody to run. They can't volunteer all those hours and raise a family today. You know, both people are working, husbands and wives are working and to get somebody to volunteer that many, some, some weeks, we have five nights where we could be at meetings. You know, or some nights, we have three meetings on one night we could attend. You know, and it, it's just putting an awful lot of burden on all volunteer help, you know, basically, you know? And that's reflective in people not running, which is bad, you know?
David, oh, sorry, John?
When, when they had a few benefits, you know, it was worth running for the position. A lot of the, the old folks that I have talked to that ran, ran and spent a lot of their time, spent a third of their time, you know, because they got the benefit and they put more time in to the position that they ran for, you know? Right now, you're looking for volunteers and just like Terry said, they used to sit down on Sundays and have a meal after church, you know? Not anymore, I don't think anybody does that anymore, very rare.
I have dinner every Sunday night with my children.
There you go.
But it comes back to the town not being willing to pay.
Exactly.
That's where the education has to come.
Yes, and, and we, we robbed Peter to pay Paul long enough here and, and somewhere just somehow, we need to bring some of that back.
I think the town voted on last town meeting that they were willing to pay for services when they were put together in a legitimate form.
Yeah.
And we incorporated everybody, two town meetings ago, they said no because the whole plan wasn't put together. Last town meeting, they said yes.
Education.
Yeah.
David, you want to comment?
And, you know, and I think the tri-boards, periodic tri-board meetings that we've had with the school, with, with finance committee, with us, has helped tremendously with the direction everybody's going. I mean, you, you can't say that we haven't in the last, how long have we been on now, three years?
And, you know, I, the finance board, I speak for all of us, we're committed. We're wanting to meet, we're going to be meeting twice a month, we're going to try to make as many easier meetings. Two thousand nineteen's going to be a rough year and again, education is huge if we're looking for money. And so we're committed to working with the select board and coming to county goals or, you know, we're past history, it wasn't always like that. And so to make you feel better, Donald, you get a hundred dollars a month and we get a hundred dollars a year, so.
And it's a lot of hours, that's what I'm saying.
It is a lot of hours, but you want to do it and you make that commitment and it also goes back to where I'm saying, we all have busy lives.
You know, I agree with her a hundred percent on education. Who would have ever thought nine ballots would have passed? I thought maybe three or four at the most, but all nine passed because people were educated and it was put in the water bill and they understood what they were voting on and they were needs that we had to have. We didn't ask for anything over and above what the town needed.
David, you want to throw your thoughts in here? No, you don't have to either, but if you choose to.
So I, I think one of the things that was mentioned by Tim McInerney and Bill Keegan when they were here, the two managers from Foxborough and Grafton, is that take your time in terms of any kind of change of form of government. Take your time, create a committee, spend a year taking a look at what works, what doesn't work and, and what would be the right solution for the town of Hadley. This has to come from the town of Hadley, from the people, from the voters, from the elected officials, from the people who are, are here to help you out on a daily basis. But right now you have a form of government which is very horizontal in terms of its decision-making. There's no one person who could make something happen, but everybody can, it's enough negative legislative effort to make nothing happen. So we had, we had an example the other day when we're just trying to take a ten thousand dollar locker room project, which had gotten into some trouble. And it took the chief of police, chief of fire, DPW director, the accountant, the town administrator to sit down and try to figure out, how do we move this thing forward? It took that kind of coordination in order to, to get a project out of the ditch. So having clear command of control structure, whether, whatever that happens to be, would, would help you with getting these projects moving forward and streamlining in your decision-making and making the, the whole town government more accountable for the work that gets done here.
And so, you know, in terms of my priorities, I think that we need to, we need to start a discussion sooner rather than later about structure. I totally agree with what you said and, well, Terry said too. I mean, this isn't something that you ramrod through and hope that, okay, well, let's talk about it and put it to town meeting. You know, that's not going to happen and it wouldn't be appropriate. So I would like us to, and I am adamantly opposed to calling it anything like a charter commission because that's what they call it next door, so we don't want to do that. But I mean, I think getting a small group of people together that are representative of the community as well as, you know, internal departments and, and the select board, just to have people think through, before they, before you come up with the solution, you really need to be able to articulate what the problems are. And I think Gabriel used the, the word systemic. To your point, because we have a flat organization, decision-making is not streamlined and it, and it can be very dodgy and again, there's not clear accountability coming out the other end. I don't know if the right answer is that we move to a stronger town administrator, town manager, but having clear accountability, clear lines of authority, to Jerry's point.
That's what we voted in.
Well, but, but the thing is, it's, it's not clear. And again, you know, just think about it tonight, we've got a parking rec. commission with purview over one thing. You've got a board of assessors with, I mean, some of this is dictated by law, but other municipalities have figured out other ways around it. And I think that we need to be responsive to the frustrations of our staff. And the staff have been loud and clear that IT and human resource support is, is nonexistent and it has to be rectified as quickly as possible. But then I also think about the group of people charged with coming up with the right solution and it's, it's hard. I mean, you know, I can say to David, okay, let's meet with somebody, but it's at the whim of my schedule because to Donald's point, I have a full-time job too, or Jerry's schedule to be able to run down to the DPW yard. An election cycle rolls through, we may or may not be sitting here and it may be somebody who doesn't have any of that time. Finance committee, we've seen what happens when we have people who are unable to make the commitment truly necessary to be a fully, you know, engaged and knowledgeable member of the finance committee. Kudos to you guys, we're thrilled right now with the composition we have, hasn't always been that way. So, you know, I, I think it's worth starting that discussion without presuming an outcome, but I would like to see, you know, us consider forming some sort of a, a board to consider all of that. And then, you know, IT and human resources, I agree with the capital issues that Jerry and Joyce were pointing out. I think we need to see those through to fruition and make sure that the focus is on doing the, the right thing no matter what, even if it means sometimes you have to change your mind midstream because there's new information available. And I'm not at all shy about considering for a fall town meeting, putting a couple of articles out there that are non-binding referendum-type articles to ask people what they think, if we can do that. You know, so again, to John's point, maybe without putting a stake in the ground, we, we may want to go to the town meeting and ask them, you know, we're thinking about discussing this, how do you feel about it? And find out sooner rather than later, hell no.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, you know.
Could you put a questionnaire in the water and sewer bills?
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about different ways to do that. I mean, and then there's also if there's a ballot, you can do a non-binding ballot, but, I think some way to get more input.
And I think you put something exciting like that on the ballot, similar to we did the police and fi- the fire substation and the senior center, you might get one hell of a turnout and get some answer you're looking for.
You get a big turnout, right?
Yeah.
You know, one last thing, Madam Chair, people have to realize we're not a one-horse town anymore with the buggy going down Route Nine. We've got between forty-five and fifty thousand cars. At night, we're still a little town, but during the day, we're a city, basically. And we've got to provide those services for our business sector and we have to have professional people in the town hall here to provide those services.
Okay, so then I'm, you know, and again, these aren't, you know, one, two, three, but I mean, I think collectively, I think there are enough of us talking about the charter discussion that we should have more conversation about it and come up with a game plan, the capital planning, which in, in my mind, you know, certainly the senior center, the projects we have underway, but also to Jerry's point, DPW and working with the municipal building committee to come up with a true capital plan. The ambulance decision I do think is going to be significant. We have ramifications in terms of the direction of staffing with our fire department going forward. So we know we talked about fire and public safety, IT and human resources and then, and then some of the, the other comments that were made wrapped in into kind of how we get there, looking at the all-boards meeting and the composes, the format of that and trying to figure out what to do about the volunteer situation as well.
I think the all-boards meeting would be a good place to bring up a split tax rate. I mean, to understand whether or not that's, it's time for us to start talking about things like that. To Donald's point, I think two weeks ago where he said, you know, much of our infrastructure and much of our, our resources and safety resources in the community have a lot to do with Route Nine out there and we just, just can't run it with the volunteer services that we've been running it with. If we're going to have to add to that, you know, there has to be an expense.
So what I'm thinking is that if, if in fact tonight what we're saying is-
It's not just our businesses, it's the commuters too, you know? It's the people coming through town. It's not just the-
We can't put up a toll booth.
I was just going to say that.
Toll booth, are we up for a toll booth?
No, no, no. You know, in District Two is here, you know, they're blaming us for the malls and we're blaming UMass and we're, you know, you, you've got five colleges here, you've got our businesses, you've got the City of Northampton businesses. You were just talking about the Amherst Business Association tonight. You know, it, it's all of this stuff put together, you know?
So what I'm thinking is, unless anybody's opposed to it, what I'd like to do is make a, a standing section of the agenda be an update. And I mean, if we're sitting here tonight saying, these are our priorities, then every agenda, we should have some form of, an update as to how we're moving forward with these priorities because there should be some sort of action.
That's what we're doing, it's going to be on our agenda every meeting.
All right, so does that make sense to everybody? And then if that's the case, then we'll proceed accordingly. And David, I know, we don't really, everybody's getting tired here, so I'm not going to have time to go through your full report, but because we're talking about human resources, I think there was one thing you wanted to talk about?
I would like to highlight it because we have five pages of things that have been done. You know, and I just highlight it as quickly as you can, David, it's really important, you know?
Okay. All right, so related to all of that, to the priorities, and I'll let everybody read the, the full report, which is always posted online. Okay, so the, related to IT, we did receive the fifty thousand dollar award for the Commonwealth Compact IT Grant. They stipulated that this would be work, that this would be dedicated to the wastewater treatment plant SCADA system. It's about half the price, so we'll have to raise the additional money at the fall town meeting. Work has to be completed by next June. We, Molly and I met with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission in the town of South Hadley related to a direct technical local assistance grant for the purposes of looking at a finance director. The conversation sort of went sideways and morphed into a conversation about some sort of regional approach to IT support. Yeah. So we're, we're exploring that. Related to HR, I signed the town up for the Employers Association of the Northeast to assist with human resource functions. We had an orientation meeting this, yesterday and based upon that meeting, a financial management team will meet to develop a course of action regarding strengthening the town's human resources efforts. These efforts will include formalizing the town's hiring processes and we had a long conversation tonight about what that shouldn't look like. Completing the updates to the personnel handbook, identifying and training, quote, managers recognizing that some of our managers are appointed or elected boards who are running departments, standardizing personnel information and updating job descriptions. So that, so that financial management team will be meeting shortly. Related to the financial management team and the Department of Revenue report, they've recommended a more formalized structure for the financial management team. And so we'll be pursuing the upgrade of that particular management team so that it reflects more closely the recommendations of the Department of Revenue. And that I think is, oh, and we went out to bid for IT for the server and I'll be presenting, evaluating that information and presenting that to you in a future meeting.
Any updates you have on the Bay Road?
Bay Road Bridge is moving a lot, a time schedule, we're still on track for the time schedule for a twelve to sixteen-week project. Weather conditions permitting, complete bridge replacement is still scheduled for 2020.
Anything else for David, otherwise we'll go into announcements?
Well, you wrote this MS Four. If we got a state revolving loan grant, then are we still using the money that we got approved from town meeting?
Yeah, so we received three hundred and ninety thousand dollars from the, the town, from the voters in order to comply with the MS Four grant, so now we have to borrow that money? And so the question is whether we borrow it under the state revolving fund program or do we borrow it on short-term or long-term borrowing? And we're thinking that the, that the market rate might be more favorable for us to go out on the market. State revolving funds has a two percent interest rate. If we can do this under a state house note or a ban, you saw the interest rate that we were, we're getting for short-term borrowing. It could be as little as half the, the amount under SRF. So we're still looking at that, that, that issue. We're still on track for completing a notice of intent, which is the first hurdle that has to be completed by September, mid-September, and we're well on the way to doing that.
Yeah, well, no, that's why I asked because he said a- Yeah, well, no, that's why I asked, because he said, you know, one percent will make quite a bit of difference over, over a short-term borrowing.
Oh, sure. Yeah, whatever's in the best interest of the town of Hadley, that's what we're going to do.
Just a quick question about revenue. I know we haven't had any discussions about putting a solar array on our landfill. Is there a reason why we haven't, where we could generate revenues?
Actually, we have started exploring that. For a long time, we, we looked at it and it looked like it wasn't feasible. Because of the infrastructure out there, you'd have to string a mile and a half of cable, which created a hurdle which couldn't be overcome. But we worked with the company of Nexamp and they came up with a proposal. Not a proposal, let's call it a concept of, of putting solar panels there. And they said it could be feasible if done correctly. This would be a long-term project, we'd have to go through the power purchasing agreement. We'd have to go through DEP because they regulate our landfill cap. But it is a possibility, so we're beginning to look at that.
Thank you.
We've applied for a grant with Belcher Town through PVPA.
PBPC.
BC. Have we heard anything back on that yet?
Haven't heard anything back yet. I think we're waiting for the federal government to set their budget priorities.
Is there a timetable on that, are we expecting it at some point in time? Or, I mean, I know we are at some point. Is there a timeframe in which we would expect to be able to back through?
Well, the federal budget expires on October first or September thirtieth. So hopefully it's going to happen between now and then.
Big vote coming up, Donald, in Belcher Town regarding staying with the HCO, correct? Next week, that is?
Yeah. It'll be interesting.
Could be pretty telling, huh?
Okay, any announcements tonight? Who wants to go first? I know they're coming.
Lady first?
Sure, I'd just like to say thank you to the friends of the seniors. The Chicken to Go was excellent this past Sunday. Enjoyed it. And then we have two condolences tonight to the family of Peter Gulliver, who passed away this week, and to the family of Pete Salvatore, who was our building inspector for, a plumbing inspector for over thirty years, so.
Forty-two, I think, there's a forty-two.
Condolences to both of their families.
And the Chicken to Go, we should also make sure that Peter Benben, Stevie Devine, Richie Cook, Ms. Egan, and Mr. Bichkowski, Ray, not Ray, it's probably.
David.
David, worked awful hard, so we really appreciate everything that they did.
It was a very hot day.
It was, it was. And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't wish our good friend Peggy Jackanowski a happy birthday tomorrow. We won't say how old you are, Peggy, but. Congratulations and we wish you, we wish you well with your AARP card.
That tells it there.
You know, one comment from graduation, and it really brought a lot of whispers in the audience and everything when they honored Ms. Judah. And the speaker that gave it was a student speaker. And she says, part of her career, she also dated Donald Trump.
Yeah, I heard that.
Which was amazing to hear at graduation, everybody, you know, it's funny.
God bless her.
Yeah.
God bless her.
Jane, you have a shredding day coming up on Friday?
We have a shredding day on Friday, from ten-thirty to noon. And the police department will be cooking hot dogs in the Amherst's.
Is there a cost for shredding?
No cost for shredding and contributions for food.
So you could bring your, your documents, say you don't want it spread around, but you don't need any more and they could be shredded and.
Absolutely.
Disposed of in an environmentally safe sentiment.
And you don't have to, if you get them in your car and drive up, they will take them out.
Excellent.
Excellent. Saturday, I'm going to be chasing a little golf ball around with the rest of the fire department in the golf tournament. I hope everybody that registered to had already got in.
Hope you have good weather.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Can't we just wait till ten, just to get Joyce?
Just to make it, yeah.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second and all, a favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.
These guys down at the end of the table are really giving it to you today.
They're, they're a real pain in the ass today.
Well, where are you heading for, Joyce? Tell the world.
Tri-board next Wednesday, six o'clock.